All right, well, let's get started. Appreciate everyone being part of the September 8th, 2020 Rowan County Commission Meeting. We are glad that you're here to join us today. And as you've heard, this meeting is being recorded. So as, as we get started, we'll start with a couple of things. We'll have our invocation provided by Chaplain Taylor, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. Chaplain Taylor, whenever you're ready.
Thank for the preparation they make these meetings, dear Lord. Blessings upon them, blessings upon Rowan County in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, Thank you for being with us, Chaplain Taylor. All right, a couple of additions to the agenda on our board appointments. We have three applications that we needed to add that you all have received for Derry Caldwell, Dr. Amy Wilson, and Jim Sides, James Sides. So those three will be added to item number thirteen. And then I'd like to add a discussion under, right after public comment. Let's see, we got a public here. Yeah, let's, let's make this item three A. Let's do this first because we've got folks on the phone with us for Rowan County lobbyist EQB Strategic. We'll add that as item three A. And that's my fault. I should have had Carolyn do that initially. Are there any other additions or deletions? Many of the Commissioners? All right, then hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda's amended?
So move.
All right, Craig, motion second. Judy, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, then we have the consent agenda before us. I'm sorry, we need to approve the minutes of August 11th and August 17th. Motion to approve those two?
So move.
All right, Judy, motion. Who was second?
Craig.
Craig, second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, then the consent agenda, items A through W. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Craig, motion. Judy, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're going to move to item number two. We've got quite a few special recognitions to do. So Carolyn, do we have someone special for us on the line?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Are they going to be on just audio or are they on video as well?
I believe there may be both. Randy, can you, can you advise from the conversation you held earlier?
Yes, we'll just have audio.
Just audio?
Unless you'd like to do video, you're more than welcome to.
Do you want to be on video? Sure. You're going to be down here in this little square. Watch this. He's going to fix it.
Hey, look at there, we can see you.
I can't see us. No, we still said special edition on ours.
Well, we can see, so bring your, bring your video down a little bit.
There we are.
You see us? Well, hello, Miss Virginia.
Oh, look at there. You're on TV.
Hello, Miss Virginia.
Miss Virginia, do you remember who I am? Greg Eds from church?
Do you remember Greg Eds, Eds from church?
Yeah, well, we've got a special recognition for you today, Miss Virginia, and I want to read this proclamation for you, okay?
Going to read this right here.
All right, here, here we go. This is a proclamation honoring the Nursing Home Advisory Committee member, Virginia Graves. Whereas we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities who reside in skilled nursing care and nursing homes. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and have the right to a say in their care. And whereas volunteering of an individual's time and resources to help our vulnerable citizens is evidence that Rowan County's greatest natural resource is in its people. And whereas Virginia Graves has committed her time and talent to Rowan County's Nursing Home Advisory Committee since February 4th, 1991. And whereas Virginia's advocacy for the rights of residents and for accountability for facilities reflects her true spirit and goodness to improving the quality of life for those in Rowan County's nursing homes. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, honor, and thank Virginia Graves for over 29 years of tireless devotion to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee and urges all citizens to take Virginia's lead by volunteering their time and talents with the same determination and compassion. And this is signed this eighth day of September, 2020. And Virginia, we just wanted, Carolyn, is she, is she the longest serving person?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, she is.
So I don't know that we've done this before, but when we found out that she served for 29 years, then we wanted to do something special for Miss Virginia. So we honor her today with this proclamation and we thank her for her hard work.
Your words.
For the example that she's given, and we wish her well, and we, we hope you're doing well, Virginia. Oh, you got a crowd in there.
We have a cheerleading section, yes, sir.
All right, we'll break out the cheer wine. Okay?
Thank y'all.
All right, Miss Virginia, we appreciate you very much.
Virginia, can you wave at the camera? Just wave back.
All right, all right. Thank you guys for setting this up. We appreciate it. All right, bye bye.
Would you like us to frame this and put it on the wall?
Well, that was different, but that, that's a good thing. I've, I go to church with Virginia and she was singing in the choir until just last year. She's a, she's a good soul and a good heart. So Carolyn, thank you for helping us put that together, okay? All right, then we have a proclamation for Constitution Week that we'd like to, to read. Constitution being an important thing here in this country and becoming even more important. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the dress drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary into the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained this, the eighth day of September, 2020. And so I'd make a motion that we pass the resolution for Virginia Graves and we, we passed this resolution for Constitution Week.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Then here's a proclamation for Patriot Day, a day of remembrance. I'm happy to read this. Is there anyone else that would like to read? All right, then I'll keep reading. Whereas on Tuesday, September 11th, 2001, terrorists attacked the United States of America in a series of senseless, cowardly, and despicable acts of war directed at innocent men, women, and children of the World Trade Center complex in New York City, the Pentagon in Washington DC, and onboard four passenger jets, resulting in the tragic loss of life of thousands of US citizens and foreign nationals. And whereas in the aftermath of the attacks, the people of the United States stood united in providing support for those in need, inspired by the heroic sacrifices of our firefighters, rescue, and law enforcement personnel, military service members, and other citizens. Whereas September 11th should not only be remembered as a day of great tragedy, but also as a day of triumph, courage, kindness, love, hope, and freedom, and as a reminder of the newfound unity, focus, and strength in our nation. And whereas by US House Joint Resolution 71, signed into law on December 18th, 2001, Congress authorized and requested the President to designate September 11th of each year as Patriot Day and to call upon state and local governments to observe Patriot Day by displaying the flag of the United States at half-staff and by observing a moment of silence at 8:46 AM marking the first plane crash. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare September 11th, 2020 as Patriot Day in Rowan County and encourages all citizens to honor and respect the innocent victims of September 11th, 2001, and to salute the heroism of public safety and rescue workers, volunteers, local officials, and those who responded to the tragic events with courage, selfless compassion, determination, and dying, undying patriotism this eighth day of September, year 2020. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So move.
All right, Craig, motion. We have a second. All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and then lastly, Rowan County Emergency Services, our EMS Division recently received the American Heart Association, the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award for implementing quality improvement measures for the treatment of patients who experience severe heart attacks. This is the seventh consecutive year Rowan has been recognized by Mission Lifeline since the recognition program launched in 2014. The EMS Gold Plus recognition is a reflection of our team's commitment to above standard training and practice, said Chief Alan Kress. If you have a cardiac event in Rowan County, you're going to get a team that is trained in the most up-to-date, evidence-based treatment guidelines. This team not only includes the EMS Division and includes the dedicated members of our local fire departments, our 911 tele, telecommunications, and other responders. We are proud of how this has improved patient care and outcomes. Every year, more than 250,000 people experience an ST elevation myocardial infarction or STEMI, the deadliest type of heart attack caused by blockage of blood flow to the heart that requires timely treatment. To prevent death, it is critical to restore blood flow as quickly as possible, either by mechanically opening the blocked vessel or providing clot, clot busting medication. The Mission Lifeline Program recognizes EMS systems for their efforts to improve systems of care to rap, and rapidly identify suspected heart attack patients, promptly notify the medical center and trigger an early response from the awaiting hospital personnel. So I don't know if Alan Kress is on this call. Alan, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Well, Alan, the Commissioners would like to extend to you and the many members of our emergency medical service community, our first responders. We appreciate this, this honor that you've received again and, and the fact that you've been honored and recognized with this EMS provider organization. So keep up the good work. Anything you'd like to say on behalf of your team, Alan?
Just thank you again for the recognition. It takes all of us to do what we do out here in the field. Thank you very much, Kim.
Well, we appreciate it, and the older the Commissioners get, the more important we know that this is becoming. So we appreciate the good work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
We have a proclamation for First Responders Appreciation Day. Whereas in 2017, the North Carolina General Assembly designated September 11th of each year as First Responders Day, making it an official state holiday in recognition of the huge sacrifices made by first responders following the World Trade Center attack in 2001. And whereas the police, firefighters, emergency medical workers, state troopers, and public health personnel, commonly known as first responders, are a vital part of our community, standing ready to carry out the critical role of protecting and ensuring public safety regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves. And whereas millions of North Carolinians have benefited from the courageous and vital services of first responders across the state in 2020 alone as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. And whereas having this day recognized each year will help keep the September 11th, 2001 sacrifices alive and continue to honor the first responders who risk their own safety and the execution of their duties every day. And whereas members of the first responder organizations undergo significant education and training in order to achieve the expertise required to respond to all types of emergency situations. And whereas the citizens of Rowan County are grateful to the men and women who perform vital services to protect and preserve their communities. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 11th, 2020 as First Responders Appreciation Day in Rowan County and encourages all citizens to express their gratitude to first responders for their sacrifice and commitment to protect and to serve. And so on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the 140-plus thousand people of Rowan County, we certainly do, especially in these times when our first responders in some communities are even targeted. We want to say thank you for your sacrifice, for your knowledge, for your experience, and for putting yourself out there in harm's way because of one reason. It's not the money, it's not the recognition. It is your love for your fellow man, and for that, we are grateful, grateful, grateful. So Commissioners, do we have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
All right, Judy, motion. Craig and Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
All right, we'll move on then to public comment. And so April, if you'll load us up.
Yes, sir. Can bear with me for just one moment while I find our first public comment participant. Okay, the first one I'm able to see is Ms. Webb. You have the floor.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on extending the solar moratorium. I do feel like that it does need to be extended because the public, we keep learning more about it and it's too important to just push it through. And I appreciate everything that Committee B has done and the Commissioners have done. They've come a long way with the regulations, with the text amendments that they have so far, but we just need to make sure that we get it right, you know, for the future of Rowan County.
All right, thank you much, Ms. Webb. Thank you very much. All right, April?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I don't see our public comment number one in the list, so if it would be okay with you, could we extend an invitation for anyone joining us to participate in public comment? They can raise their hand at this time.
Yeah, so if there's anyone else out there that would like to, to speak.
Okay, it looks like we have Patricia, Coroner Cowan. You have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me, everyone?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. First of all, you know, I'm the long-term care, I'm the busman who covers Rowan County. And I just wanted to say to you on behalf of the Rowan County Nursing Home Committee and the Adult Care Home Committee, we want to thank you for giving this special recognition to Virginia Graves. She's been a special, she's a special lady to us, and without the help of, from Carolyn and from you all, this wouldn't have been done. And also want to thank the facility because they went that extra special mile to make sure this was able to take place for Ms. Graves today. So just want to thank you for all the support that you've given us over the years for all of our residents in long-term care facilities and for the support that you give all of the volunteers in the community. So once again, just thank you for all that you do.
Oh, well, well, thank you. And you know, Virginia is a special lady. She served in our military. And she actually has a book that's out. I don't know, I think my wife's got a copy, but I don't know if you can get copies of that anymore, but she is an, she is a remarkable lady. And so we're very honored to honor her here today. So thanks for helping that work, okay?
Oh, you're welcome. You have a good day.
You as well. April, is there anyone else?
I am not seeing any other raised hands at this time.
Well, we'll, we'll kind of leave that open. If, if folks are having a tough time getting in, if they'll let us know, then we'll, we'll make accommodation, okay? All right, so if there aren't any others that we see, April, then we'll move on to item three A. We have with us from EQV Strategic, Mr. Chris Wall and Andy Munn. So what this is about is for the six years that I've been Commissioner, I've been happy for surrounding communities as I've seen that they've been able to, to make announcements on federal and state grants. And frankly, to be honest with you, at times I feel like I'm outside in the rain, peering through the window and watching how the party's going. And so in speaking to a couple of folks, including our county manager and our county attorney, Rowan County has never had a dedicated lobbyist to us. And so we have reached out to a group called EQV Strategic. The, the county manager and the county attorney and myself met with them a few weeks ago, just to really get a sense of what this, any lobbying group could do for Rowan County. But considering that there's a lot going on in the world right now in the way of, of grant work, especially from the federal and, and state area, we thought that it would be good for us to discuss this. So we have Chris and Andy with us today, and I think, I'm not sure if Chris or Andy is going to be speaking, but they're with us. And so, gentlemen, if you'll jump in, we'd just like you to the 703 number.
Hi, Chairman, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, let's see if I can fix that then. Is that better?
That's about the same. Just speak up and we'll be fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk as loud as I possibly can. Tell me if there's anything you can't, you can't hear, but thanks so much for, for having us. My name's Chris Wall. I'm also joined by my business partner, Andy Munn here. He's on the line with me as well. Really appreciate the time with the County Commissioners. Just a real quick about myself, or about the company. Andy and I, we're actually a brand new company, but Andy and I have been doing this for a long time. Started my career off in 2001 on Capitol Hill, worked for two House members and two senators. Left, left Senator Richard Burr's office where I handled economic development and business and local government issues for him to run a trade association's lobby shop in Washington DC. I'm originally from North Carolina, from Winston-Salem. My wife's from Charlotte. We had had our second child, decided it was time to come back to North Carolina. Joined a firm back here, started doing state work and federal work, did that for six years. At the beginning of, of this year, there was a, a series of events that Andy and I, which he'll, he'll tell him about yourself in just a second, but Andy and I started out together and we'd always talked about partnering up. And events led to us that we were either going to, we were either going to start this company or, or may not get this chance again. So we decided to take the plunge and we created EQV Strategic. We were fortunate enough to bring a, a good bit of our old clients with us to the organization. But we have a lot of experience in dealing with local governments, state and federal, and always on the lookout for opportunities to advance Rowan County's agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy to introduce himself, and then we can answer or talk about any issue you'd like, please.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Members of the Commission, for allowing us to be before you today. My name's Andy Munn. I'm, I'm also a native North Carolinian. I was, I grew up in Gastonia, North Carolina. Also cut my teeth on, in, in politics up on Capitol Hill about 20 years ago. Worked for about six years for three different members up there. And then I spent some time, I, I moved back to Charlotte with my wife and, and, and worked in government affairs for a, a trade association and, and then also a large multinational corporation doing state government affairs. And then for about the past eight years, I've, I've been in Raleigh with my, my wife and my three sons. And I worked for Speaker Tillis as his policy director, and then Speaker Moore as his Deputy Chief of Staff during his first term. And, and for the past four years, I've, I've been doing contract lobbying work and helping folks, you know, accomplish what they need to get done in the General Assembly throughout the budget process and anything else that, that happens along the way.
All right.
Go ahead.
Did you have something to add, Chris?
No, sir, sorry.
Okay. So, so the question to, to a county, specifically to county Commissioners is, you know, why don't we just keep doing what we're doing? Or what, what can a firm like this offer Rowan County that we're missing? What, what are we missing and how can we capture that?
So anytime that a local government hires a lobbyist, it's usually for one thing, and that is bringing money back to the locality, wherever that may be. And that would be ultimately the county, the reason that we're, that we're able to tie this in years in Raleigh every single day of the week. So anytime there is a discussion of a new program or an existing program, then we immediately alert Rowan County. We make sure that that program, that Rowan County will be eligible for that program. And if, if they're not, then we work with lawmakers to change the program so that Rowan County will be eligible for that, for that program. And that's, you know, there are a number of other things that we could think of. You know, remember when the sales tax use change was proposed a couple of years ago? And that impacted counties and cities greatly, differently up and down the, up and down the, from the mountains to the coast. We're the ones that are there every single day conveying Rowan County's position to your, not only your local elected officials, but then state and senate, I mean, House and senate leadership as well. In addition, there's a, I know that the Transportation Museum, which fortunately was just allowed to open up, I think on Friday. However, there is an issue with the train and it's still be labeled, it's still classified as an amusement ride. And so the transportation And so the Transportation Museum Spencer is not allowed to operate that train, which I'm assuming is probably the biggest draw for that Transportation Museum. Issues like that, we work on for local governments on a daily basis. Where, you know, we, we bring our relationships with house and senate leadership to the table, with the governor's office, with the administration, even with the individuals that are career, career governed employees that work in the various departments. Andy and I have relationships and know the right buttons to push at the right time for what Rowan County wants to achieve.
All right, Andy, anything to add to that?
No, I, I think Chris pretty well covered it. Just maybe anecdotally, you know, this past week, the, they passed a final COVID package at the General Assembly and then adjourned Sonny Die. And we were, we were obviously there. We, you know, when they're in session, we, we pretty much live at the building. And, and we, we had a client that had a concern with something that was in the, in the package. And we were, we were made aware of it at about 11:00 AM. And by about 3:00 PM after, you know, several hours of hustling, we were able to work with both Democrats and Republicans to, to have an amendment offered to take that piece out. So things happen that quickly up there where, you know, a bill is rolled out and it's, it's passed within, you know, 24, 48 hours. And, and that's why I think it's, it really behooves a county like Rowan to have some boots on the ground, watching everything that goes through and being able to react at a moment's notice.
Can you talk to us a little bit about federal lobbying as well? Because certainly I think in all of our minds is we have a couple of really good local legislators in the senate, in the house, that we send them there to work for us. On the federal level, it gets a little thinner. We certainly work very well with our, our congressman and our senator. But, but it's, I mean, there is just a little bit more distance. And that's just because one is, we've got folks that, that live here in the community that work for us on the state level. Folks on the federal level, it's just a little more distant. So could you talk a little bit about the federal side?
Yeah, happy to Chairman. This is Chris. I handle the, the federal side of our, of our lobbying shop. As I've said earlier, I spent about, about 14 years in Washington DC. Andy spent about eight. For the last five years that I was in Washington DC, I ran a an associations lobby shop for the pork industry. Obviously pork being extremely important to the state of North Carolina. But it's so my relationships with the North Carolina delegation were, you know, those are, those were relationships that I had to keep up on a daily basis. Plus the fact that I'm a North Carolinian and you just have the natural progression. So Richard Hudson, you know, Richard, Richard and I went to college together and started off on Capitol Hill together and are still really close friends. Same thing with David Rouser, Dan Bishop, who is now, you know, in the house. And then Greg Murphy over on the far side. But for you guys, right, so I'm fairly certain you're, you're Hudson. They've redrawn the maps so many times on me, I have a hard time keeping up with it these days. But whether it's Hudson.
We're Bud.
Oh, yeah. So Representative Bud and I are very good friends. His chief of staff worked with Andy and myself when they were in the, when he was at Department of Transportation. We maintain a, a close working relationship. And I apologize, I can say they, they changed the districts on me so many times. I have to consult the maps all the time. But, but as far as, you know, getting you in front of Ted Bud's office, Senator Burr, Senator Tillis, that's never a problem. We maintain strong relationships with those offices.
How do you work with? Again, we have a very personal, close relationship with our local guys, with Harry Warren and with Carl Ford in the house and the senate in North Carolina. How can you, how can you help them help us? And what, what is it that you can do that these guys, to add to what these guys are already doing here for Rowan County?
Yeah, it goes back to being your eyes and ears and boots on the ground 24/7 in Raleigh. And, you know, the thing about it is those guys do a fantastic job. And Representative Warren is really making, has, has created a good reputation for himself. Is liked by leadership, can get things done. But you have to understand, they get pulled in so many different directions every single day that even though they, they do, they do their level best to remember every single thing, you know, that they can help with Rowan County. Again, sometimes there's just not enough minutes in the day. So what we do is where they are constantly reminding them. But not only constantly reminding them, but we're also working with all of their, of their colleagues in various other parts of the state to show why, what, you know, what Senator Ford or Representative Warren, the legislature where in North Carolina, we're what we call force multipliers. We help them stay on track. And then again, we're boots on the ground to help them achieve what they want to do for Rowan County.
Okay, so in our conversations, we, we would basically pay a monthly retainer. And we're not signing any long-term contract. It's a 30-day opt-out. Could you explain to us how that, how that works?
Yes, sir. So typically what we like to do is we like to sign, what, what we would do is we would put forth a, a letter of engagement that is typically for 12 months. And we do it for 12 months, again, because there's continuity, there's continuity. Gives us time to learn each other. And, you know, in the game of government, as you guys know, opportunities come and go. And sometimes they're, they're a little difficult to predict. But we're constantly there working, looking for those opportunities. But what we do, what, what we do offer in all of our contracts for all of our clients is what we call a 30-day out clause. So if for some reason, you know, we're, we're two months into this and the commissioners just decide that this just isn't something that they want to do. Or if, you know, if we miss a big opportunity, say when they come back in and in January and there's a big grant program and Andy and I miss it and Rowan County's left out, then, then that gives you the opportunity to say, hey, you know, this, this just isn't working out. And you can exercise that 30-day option at any time. We, I, I'll put a plug in, we've never had anybody exercise that 30-day option. Obviously, we're young, but all the clients that Andy and I were able to bring together, we've had for multiple years. So we, we like longevity, we, we like showing value and bringing a return on investment. So the 30-day out clause, you know, is rarely used, but it is there as a safety valve in case you guys decide that it's just not something you want to do anymore.
Are there stipulations on the 30-day out? I mean, we, we can, we can just not feel good about it and get out, right?
You just say, hey, we don't, we, we don't, we don't want to move forward. We're exercising that 30-day out, that's it.
Commissioners, questions?
Yeah. Chris and Andy, this is Judy. We've been able to have some conversations and I appreciate that. Andy, I got your references and I left messages with all the Democrats. And I haven't heard back from any of them. So I'm still waiting on that. And Chris, I don't have any of your references at all. Can you get those to me?
Yeah, Commissioner, I apologize if, if you check and if you didn't get it, let me know. But I had replied all to Andy's email and sent you mine. So let me know if you need me to send it again.
Okay, I'll check that. The last company that you worked for, how long did you work for them?
So this is Andy, Andy Munn. I was, I was at the law firm Moore and Van Allen for about three and a half years. And I joined that firm straight out of Speaker Moore's office. And, and like Chris alluded to earlier, just sort of a confluence of events led, led us to believe it was the right time for us to form our, our, our firm. And, and so I, I resigned about a week before the pandemic broke, which gave my wife quite a bit of heartburn. But fortunately, knock on wood, we're, we're in good shape now. But yeah, so I was there for about three and a half years.
Commissioner, I was, Commissioner, I was at my previous firm for a little over five years.
And that was?
That was the policy group. If you remember, that's the, that was the father-son. The dad was named Steve Metcalf, Senator Steve Metcalf, right from, from the Asheville area, yes.
Thanks, I needed that reminder.
You got it.
I understand and really appreciate the boots on the ground and having, having your ear there too, because having been in the legislature, I know how fast things can move. So you said you were able to bring some of your clients with you. How many clients do you have? And would you be willing to send us a list?
Yes, ma'am. We're happy. It's, it's a public, everything that we do is public record. So you can, you can look us up. We're, we're an open book. I'm, I'm happy I will follow up and send our list of clients. I think I'll have to, you know, I'll be within one or two, but I'm fairly certain state clients, we have 13.
Okay.
Plus or minus one or two.
Okay. And do you represent any other counties or local municipalities?
No, ma'am. We do not represent any other counties or units of local government. However, we do represent the North Carolina Association of Regional Council of Governments, which is the association of all 16 COGS across the state.
Okay. And I know we talked a little bit about the elections and what's to come. One of my concerns, and no offense because I'm a Republican, but once again, having had the experience of working with lobbyists, most successful firms that I worked with, but had both Republicans and Democrats in them. And what, what are your future plans in trying to get some quality Dems in with your firm?
Yes, ma'am. If you and I, as you and I have discussed and Andy and I have discussed at length, you know, we are, I go back to, you know, we both worked for Republican members that, you know, absolutely no denying that. But when we walk into the building, you know, we're seen as extensions of our clients. We're not seen as Republican or Democrats. We're not political operatives. You know, we're not, you know, knee-deep in, in campaigns and, you know, and actively working to elect one member over another. We work with every single member of the General Assembly. As Andy alluded to earlier, the, just last week, the, the provision that we needed to get stripped out for the triple A's, the area agency on aging. The, the governor was supportive of what we were doing. We were able to work with our Democrat colleagues to form an amendment on the, on the senate floor. And then we were able to convince our Republican colleagues to support that Democrat amendment, which frankly, just, I mean, honestly, just doesn't happen a lot these days. But back to your, back to your original question, we do want to be seen as a bipartisan firm. We understand that in order to do that, we need to bring on an individual that has, you know, experience in the Democrat Party. We are definitely going to do that. We, we, we realize that we probably won't have access to the best candidates until after the election. So that's when we will start to look at the individuals and talk to, we've had some preliminary discussions with a few folks, some really great candidates. But, you know, in difference to make sure that we don't violate any laws and they, you know, they aren't torn on what to do. We're going to wait till after the election to have those serious conversations.
Okay. You said that you represented the organization for all the COGS. What are some of the projects you worked on for them?
So the big thing that we do for COGS is, well, one, that when we first were hired is, was just reputational management. And I think you guys are, are fully aware that the COGS went through a rough spot, you know, for a few years and they, they, they weren't looked on favorably, especially by this general assembly. So we did a lot of reputational management lately, what, but we, we've really been successful in that. And it kind of culminated in the fact that they were included in the first COVID package that the state put out and were specifically named in legislation that they were eligible for a good bit of the funding that came through that you guys were also eligible for too, specifically on FEMA grants. But one of the, we, we work on water and sewer projects for them a good bit. We, we did something with Senator Newton that allowed them to administer wastewater grants for assessments and improvements. We also do broadband with them. And again, we're working on just allowing them. The latest thing is the CDBG CV funds that the governor released to cover utility rental assistance, helping them help their members draw those funds down and to access them and to maximize them in the best capacity.
I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you Judy. Any other questions?
I had a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
How you doing gentlemen?
Hey, sir, how are you?
Good, good. Couple of quick questions. So do you, for instance, you know, we fund the sheriff's office. So does, would the sheriff's office need to hire you separately from the county if they wanted you to use your services? And maybe some of the, some of the other things that, some of the other things that we fund locally?
So it's a great question. Typically, what we will do is we will sit down and we'll, we will work out what ultimately we call a legislative agenda for Rowan County. And if that were to include, if the county wanted to include issues related to the sheriff's department, then we are more than happy to, then, then that would be covered under the cost of the retainer. If the sheriff's department were to come to us and say, we would like for you to work on something outside of what the county has instructed you to do, then typically that's when we would enter into a contract with your sheriff's department. But if the commissioners tell us to work on something on behalf of the sheriffs, then we'll do that, no problem.
So I guess that's kind of leads my second question. From time to time, we'll pass resolutions to go to our state representatives or federal representatives. Even some, even those may not be financial in nature. Do you work on those issues or do you only work on financial issues?
No, sir. We work on whatever you want us to work on.
You know, if I could interrupt, Mike, you, you might ask him about our recent proclamation, which was sent to the governor regarding our transportation museum. So that's an issue that we've already discussed with these guys and, and how they could be helpful. So didn't have anything to do with financial, asking for money. It had to do with, you know, the, the COVID restrictions. So Chris and Andy, I don't know if you want to, that kind of gets to what Mike's question is. If you wanted to, to talk a little bit about, about that. Or I don't know what you can say.
Yeah, well, one, when we had, when we had lunch, I guess it was two weeks ago now, Chairman and, and Aaron and Jay brought up the Transportation Museum. You know, the fact that it was closed at that point in time. But that the train ride was classified as an amusement park ride, which was even if the museums were allowed to be open, was, you know, that, that was your main draw. And if you can't get people to come, then what's the point of it being open? We had, we had some preliminary discussions with members of the General Assembly and the governor's office after lunch, just kind of take their temperature on, you know, is that After lunch, you just kind of take their temperature on, you know, is that something that we could work on? It was a resounding yes. In fact, I talked to the governor's office on Thursday. When, when he had alerted me to, because I had asked him about, you know, what the EO was going to mean for museums and amusement parks. And he had read it to me. And I think when we made the determination that the executive order wasn't going to allow the train to reopen, then I called him back and said, you know, I think this is something that we may work on. And the governor's office, you know, I, I was pleasantly surprised, said, we're happy to have those discussions with you. So I, I think ultimately what you're asking us is could we get the train running again? It's something that we, we definitely do, right? I, we can't make promises. But I, I, I cautiously optimistic that that's something that we could get done. Hopefully fairly quickly through an executive order.
Okay.
So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that, uh, so that, that was a specific item, but I, Mike, does that kind of get to your question of it's not just financial, but it could, could be.
Yeah, kind of. I mean, I was thinking of many years ago, we passed a resolution asking the state not to, uh, publish concealed carry holders, home addresses, something like that, which has no financial situation at all. But I don't, so I guess in the contract, whatever contract we would, we would create, would we specifically say if we pass resolutions? Or would it, you would say, well, you can have five things that we'll work on for you. Because if you have, you know, if we send up 40 resolutions, that's a lot of stuff to work on. Which we normally don't, but if you have a lot of different things coming, so is there, you know, a certain amount of, I guess there's tiers. If you're spending X amount of hours on our projects, you know, we go into a different tier, or is it sort of a, um, flat rate sort of thing? Because what if, and I guess my question is, what if we send something up to you that's a three to two vote? Well, the two commissioners are not going to really want you to work on that, but it is, uh, the will of the board. But if, if we're sending a lot of things up at some point, if you, you know, luckily, right now, we're, we're pretty much on board with most things. But how do you, I guess, divide your time up between what you work on for us and, and how much time you would spend on that, I guess? Because if you had, I don't know, say a resolution about the trains, but also we're looking to get, you know, a $2 million grant for sewage, uh, treatment plan or something. You know, how do you balance what's more important than the other?
So Commissioner, with, you know, well, again, what we typically like to do is, so if you're comfortable moving forward with us, the first thing we want to do is, is sit down with you, whether that's in person or virtually, and listen to you, understand all the priorities facing Rowan County. And then we will give you our honest feedback on, you know, when we think we could be successful, if we think we could be successful. And, you know, the timelines for each of the issues. But generally what we will do is we will also work out what, you know, a communication chain. So again, typically with a county, our point of contact is generally the county commission, I mean, the, the county, uh, manager. If the, if the board wants that to be the chairman or all, or, or, or communicate with all five members of the commission at once, we're, we're going to do whatever you guys want us to do as far as a communication concern. You know, the, the thing about the multiple resolutions, and let me just go back. We will, we will have a scope of services that will be fairly general in our contract. But we're going to work on whatever you guys want us to work on. All right. Don't, don't, don't worry about that. You know, if there are 40 resolutions, you, we may prioritize them and say, okay, let's, you know, let's talk about which ones are the most pertinent right now. But in the end, we're going to work on everything you need us to work on. And just as far as like, you know, how we balance our time, as Andy said earlier, we, we're in that General Assembly building all day long. And it is, it is, it is routine for us to set a meeting with, uh, with Representative Warren. And the first, you know, 30 minutes of the conversation is all about Rowan County. And then if we needed to talk to him for another client, then, then we will do it then, or we'll come back and catch him later in the day. But just from the fact that we are there all day, we are, we are, we're able to handle our client load and not have, you know, never had any issues of one client dominating, um, or not being able to deliver because we were working for another client at the time.
Well, that, that brings up another question. What if you have, uh, clients that have opposing, opposing goals? How do you handle that?
Yeah, hopefully that will never be the case because we don't, we don't, uh, we don't represent any other local governments, right? But, but we're, we're honest with you, right? I mean, and we will come to you and say, you know, client X is opposed to this, you're supportive of it. You know, worst case scenario is we may have to recuse ourselves from that one specific issue. But again, we, I've, in my entire career, um, I've never had that happen to me where it, and I have had, I have had situations where I've had clients that weren't in complete agreement with each other, but we were able to bring them to the table, sit down and work out a solution. I've never had to recuse myself from an issue because I had two clients that were just diametrically opposed. But we, we would certainly alert you to that immediately, once we learned of it.
And, and this is Andy. I, I'd just like to add to that. Um, you know, we, we basically trade in, in Raleigh, Chris and I trade on our reputations. And we've spent, decades now, building those reputations as, as fair, honest brokers and, and, you know, telling folks, explaining to them what issues we're working on and, and why. And if, if you've ever gotten to the point, which, you know, in, in the past, I've gotten there with other clients where there could be a perceived conflict, then what we would do is immediately contact you and the other client and, and address the conflict immediately and say, look, this is, this is a problem and we need to sort our way through it. And, you know, it could be a, a minor issue and, and you guys say, forget about it. Or it's a, it's a major issue and, and we'd have to address that. But, but one thing I can tell you, is that if you're, if you're working both sides of an issue in the building, uh, your, your reputation is at risk. And that's one thing Chris and I will, will never, uh, put in jeopardy.
What is, um, I know you guys are a brand new company, but thinking back to your last positions, what are some of the biggest policy, policy projects that you've worked on and had, had success with?
Yeah, for me, that's easy. Uh, I was, I helped get a constitutional amendment approved, uh, two years ago on the ballot. If you remember the Victims' Rights Amendment, that was on the ballot that passed with about 64% vote. I worked on that for three years. And getting a constitutional amendment through the General Assembly is a very difficult, um, project. And I was extremely proud that we were able to get it unanimously through the House, through the Senate. And if you remember there, the, that amendment was a part of a package that was, I think there were four amendments that were fairly controversial. The Victims' Rights was not, and was not included in any of the rhetoric on, on pro or against the amendments. And that's because we did a great job of, uh, having bipartisanship in the, in the House and Senate and including the governor in every step of the way. So that was a, a major legislative achievement, just one recently, since Andy and I have been together. Um, I think I've mentioned, we represent Auto Bill Car Wash. They are, uh, they have about 3,000 employees in the state. They weren't eligible for any of the, of the federal or state relief, uh, packages that, that were put through. They were getting completely crushed hometown, homegrown, uh, business. And we worked with the General Assembly to create a program that allowed those medium sized businesses to access COVID funds to help them stay afloat. So I was really proud of that as well.
And then, uh, this is Andy. Uh, a couple of years ago, I was registered for a major professional sports franchise in North Carolina. And I was able to, um, have a, uh, a piece of a bill amended to, uh, allow a new interpretation for tax treatment that ended up saving them a quarter of a million dollars a year. And, and, uh, this year, in that year and, and all the out years. So that was, that was a big one. And then, uh, last year, it seems rather inconsequential, but I, I was able to get a study bill through for a, uh, an organization I represent. And, uh, you know, famously, the Senate, uh, does not pass study bills. But I was the only study bill that got passed through the Senate. And we were able to get it passed unanimously and just working with, uh, Senate leadership and others. Um, so, uh, those are probably two of my, the, the top ones that, that come to mind right off the bat.
So what's the Senate going to study?
Retirement savings options for, uh, for, kind of, for blue collar workers.
Near and dear to my heart.
We, we represent AARP, Commissioner. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, this is, uh, Jim Green.
He perked up with that retirement savings, didn't he?
Yeah, buddy. You hit home with that. No, uh, Rowan County, um, really, really needs an advocate for, uh, for grants. We, we are certainly looking for grants, all the grants that we can find to help, uh, school, build schools. Volunteer fire departments live off of grants to, to purchase equipment with. What, at what extent do you folks, uh, work with grants? And do you have, uh, anybody that, uh, works for you that possibly could help, uh, with the actual grant writing? Or is that something that's just done on a local basis?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, we do not write grants, but I tell you what we do do. We know the individuals that give the grants. And I, I'll give you one specific example, which is the, uh, uh, the Needs-Based Capital School Fund, which is a grant program created by the General Assembly that allows for the new construction consolidation of schools, which I think you guys have a, a project like that going on in Rowan County. Tier one, tier two counties, you'd be eligible for up to $10 million. That is a, that is a fund or a grant that's, that's almost hand selected by the superintendent of public construction. We have a great relationship with the current superintendent and could be very influential in that process. Same thing when I mentioned earlier, you know, knowing the individuals that are what we call career professionals at, you know, the Department of Transportation, um, DEQ, uh, you know, DPI, DIT, all of the administration. It's, it's extremely helpful to know those people because those are ultimately the individuals that are part of the committee that do the grant selection process. And one, we help you identify the grants, uh, that you would be eligible for. And then once you, once you, um, once you apply, then we do, to the extent the law allows us, right? We want to make sure that we're always abiding by the law and not doing anything that would preclude you from getting a grant. But we, we work with those individuals to ensure that they've seen, they've seen your application. They've heard the pitch and you're, you're top of mind.
Andy and Chris, just, uh, two other thing, two other topics would be broadband and airport. Any, anything to add on that?
Yeah, uh, Chairman, this is Chris. I, I have, uh, worked extensively with airports in the, in the state, all across the state. Locally in your area, worked really closely with Statesville Airport to extend their runway, put in an ILS system, build a, build a, a second runway. Worked with Concord Regional to do, uh, you know, a good bit of work there, a couple of other airports across the state. We work with DOT and the FAA extensively. So, uh, you know, have a good understanding of the economic engine that airports can be to, uh, local governments. And then the, the needs surrounding, ensuring that that airport is a, uh, an economic engine for you. So, uh, lots of, uh, lots of work there and, and.
And, and yeah, this is Andy. Um, you know, I've, uh, in my experience working for both, uh, both of the past two speakers, I was really a, a generalist, uh, but I worked extensively with, um, the Mecklenburg delegation back in 2013 when, the Charlotte Douglas Airport was turned into an airport authority. And then also worked with, uh, now Senator Ford, back when he was a freshman in the house on the, on specifically on, on your airport issue, uh, back then. So I, I've got some experience, uh, not, not to the, the depth probably that, that Chris has, but, uh, certainly recognize and, and, you know, in my, my background with my, my father being a, a city manager in the Gastonia Municipal Airport, certainly recognize what an economic engine those can be for you all.
And, and lastly, broadband is such an issue to us because we're such a large county. But we've got a lot of rural areas that have, uh, little to no internet at all. Could you address that?
Can I ask you a question, Chairman? Are you guys familiar with the GREAT program that the General Assembly implemented all, maybe two years ago? Are, are you guys familiar with that?
With what, what's it called again?
It's called the GREAT program, growing rural, um, economic, uh, I, it's, it's the new broadband program that the General Assembly has put in, in a nutshell, to try to think outside of the box. What the General Assembly did is they provided funds, which they have, through COVID, have funded significantly. And the funds, instead of going to local governments or, um, or, you know, citizens, it goes to the, the carriers. So the, think of the AT&amp;Ts and, and stuff, but what, but in order.
Randy Kress is on here and I know he knows, we, I believe we have been working on that. The issue has been, uh, the, the tiers. We're a tier two community. And, uh, they've not broken out of tier one yet. And we've got a lot of desperate families that, that are especially in the COVID issue when kids, you know, some kids, uh, can't or find it hard to learn at home because of, uh, of rural internet, rural broadband issues. So we pushed ahead outside of that program and said, listen, we will start doing scent private companies with our own dollars, uh, if we can't get the state to, to kind of move in our direction on the tier plan. And then, uh, now that the, the, the COVID dollars have come this way, they did tell us that we could use some of our dollars, uh, for broadband. So we've committed 50,000, uh, from the county. And then when the COVID dollars, uh, came, we committed 200,000 out of that. We just completed an RFQ and have identified a, a carrier, a wireless broadband carrier. So we are moving that, in that direction, but that, that's not going to cover everything we need to cover. So our, I guess our question would be, how do we, how do we move into more areas that are unserved or underserved? And, and, um, broadband's a big discussion. Uh, do you have any expertise in that?
Sure. Uh, work on broadband, uh, a, a, a good bit. And what I would tell you is good news, bad news. The, the GREAT program, actually, the budget that was never passed included extending the GREAT program to tier two counties. And I know that's something that the General Assembly, um, wants to do. And I anticipate that they will, they will do that in a legislative vehicle outside of the budget early on in the long session next year. And that's something that we could absolutely, um, work on for you. The, the next question I was have is, is any part of Rowan County covered by, um, the electric co-ops or electric cities?
Yes.
Do you know?
Yeah, we've got, um, I know we've got, we've got Landis. Is there any, any others?
I think so.
So we, yeah, Landis has their own, uh, electric city.
Yeah. So there's a, yeah, Kannapolis is probably Duke, I would hazard say, but I'd have to check it out. But, but so Electric Cities, there's an option for you. There was some language that, that the General Assembly included, uh, last session. Uh, so I think this, this previous short session that allowed the co-ops and electric cities to, um, lay fiber along their, um, uh, their easements and work with cities and counties on, on being providers. Or actually, I think they have to work with, uh, with the carriers, but the, but the co-ops can lay the fiber and has money to help offset some of the. and has money to help offset some of the, the costs associated with the carriers coming in and establishing service. So, so there's an idea. There, there's a tremendous amount of, of attention on broadband. As you can imagine, you know, in the first COVID package, the, they provided a good bit of funding for, to DPI to outfit buses with wireless, with wireless antennas and drive them out into various parts of the county. Obviously, that's not a long-term solution. But the, the GREAT program, you know, started at $10 million. Now I think it's had a total of $65 million just in the last year and a half. So, you know, hopefully that will start to have an impact. But working with, you know, I think there's the, the, the county commissioners and the North Carolina League of Municipalities, as for some time, pushed allowing municipalities and local governments to enter into contracts with carriers to do exactly what you were talking about. That, that's, that has been met with a good bit of opposition from the Republican-controlled General Assembly. But outside of that, there are a number of things that they are doing to help, to help broadband deployment. And, you know, we're generally at the table and can help Rowan County with whatever you guys feel is the best case for you. Again, outside of direct, you know, allowing people to directly, or allowing Rowan County to be a carrier. That's something that the General Assembly just hasn't done. Yeah, yeah, they're not going to do that. But there are lots of other ways that we, yeah.
For the record, we'll say it again, we don't want any part of that. We're, we're, we're working, we're working to incent the private industry, private sector-
That's right.
-to come in. And, you know, the big carriers, they, 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 they can't wire up the county. There's not enough density. And so they walked away from the table. So, all right, well, I don't want to beat that anymore, but it's something certainly we can work on. So, well, I, I don't, I don't have any more questions unless someone else does, then.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Okay.
Chris and Andy, do you know of any other lobbying firms that represent single counties?
Yes, ma'am. I'd have to get you all the, which I can do, just give me a day or two and I can get it for you. But there are multiple counties throughout the state that have individual lobbyists. I mean, obviously, most are, most are members of the, of the North Carolina County Commissioners Association. But, you know, all of your major counties, Mecklenburg, Wake, Guilford, Forsyth, Moncombe, and New Hanover, I know for a fact, all have lobbyists. I'd have to look to see how many others there are. But I can tell you, my former, in my former firm, we represented Green County and Edgecombe County. You know, two of the, two of the, the least affluent counties in the state. But they thought it was advantageous to put tax dollars to lobbyists because, again, the, the return on investment.
Thanks. So what can you guys do that our state association can't do? I mean, they've got three full-time lobbyists.
So they, you know, if you're talking about the North Carolina County Commissioners Association, which is a great organization. And I work with Kevin and those guys all the time. But, you know, they, they developed their legislative agenda for the top two or three issues that impact all of the, the, the counties in the state. And the difference is, they're not looking out for Rowan County every single day. Now, what they do ultimately, you know, ultimately will benefit you, but it's in a, it's in a macro level rather than a micro level. And that's where we come in. And we're basically, we're your, we're your political assassins, specifically working on Rowan County and not having to deal with every other county's input while we're doing so.
And, and I'll, I'll jump in there too. And, you know, obviously, with the Association of County Commissioners, you, you all are one of 100. And, and they set their agenda based on that and trying to develop consensus. But taking it back to what Chris mentioned earlier about our representing Autobell, you know, Autobell likely is a member of the State Chamber of Commerce. And they, you know, in the State Chamber worked on, on influencing COVID packages that were coming down from, from Raleigh and the federal government as well. But, but, but Autobell was kind of left out, and they were in no man's land there. And that's why they, they hired Chris and I to, to, to step in and, and tailor a program that really specifically helped, helped their business, their size business. And that's exactly what we, we can do for Rowan County is to tailor a message and a legislative strategy that specifically helps Rowan and, and doesn't get you lost in the one-out-of-100 shuffle.
Great, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Thanks for the questions, Commissioners, those are all good. And Chris and Andy, thank you. So what, what's the pleasure of the board? I'd like us to move ahead. I think, I mean, I, I hate to put Aaron and Jay on the spot, but usually when I say that, that means I'm about to put them on the spot. And, and feel free to decline if you like. But Aaron and Jay, do you have anything you'd like to add to this at all?
This is Aaron, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have anything to add. Unless you have any specific questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. I, I think, and consistent with what I have, you know, said to you and, and others with whom I've spoken, I think the question with regard to the advantage of having someone working on your behalf on specific issues that you want them to work on in Raleigh is a good idea. I think the question, you know, is who? And, and so yeah, I, I, I think there is some distinct advantage to having somebody up there full-time for you guys. I think it's just up to you guys to determine, you know, who that would be.
Thank you. I have a question for Aaron, Chris. Aaron, what, what account would you use to pay for this salary for this, for these gentlemen?
That, that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner. So let me rephrase your question. I, I guess you're, you're asking me if this is approved or not, how would we pay for it? Is that the question?
Basically that, since the budget's already been passed and these aren't employees, I just didn't know what account this would come from.
We, we would, we would find a way and bring that back before the board to approve the budget amendment.
Okay.
So, so you could approve, if, if the board wanted to approve a contract to not, we would need to bring a budget amendment back before the board at the next meeting to be approved before the contract could be executed, unless we had a line item that we felt like we could, we could use to pay for it out of. You know, if it didn't require a budget amendment from the general fund, we could take care of that without bringing it back to the board.
Let's say we do this, and next year it's budget session time. Where, what, what fund do you pull that out of for next year?
Commissioner, that's, we, we just have to look at that next year. You know, it would be an increase to the overall budget. But now we, I don't have the budget right in front of me, but we do have different line items for consultants, et cetera. And we do have a contingency fund. But normally, before we spend contingency, we'll bring that back before the board to approve. Leslie, are you, are, are you on right now?
Yes, sir.
I think, do you know how much is in contingency right now?
I'm looking right now.
50,000?
Um, listen, we've already, we've already taken some out, I think. Um, I think it's about 18,500 at this moment. That's because during the budget process, we allocated contingency for two items dur- during that process.
That, that's-
I will say that we do have a, as Aaron said, we have a contracted services line and also a consulting line. And there is some money in at least one of those lines that is not allocated. We, we didn't put a lot in the budget this year, but you know, I would say, I, I'm thinking at least 25,000. And I, I don't know how much this contract will be. But I do think we have some unallocated funds currently in the budget.
To my understanding is that the retainer is 5,000 a month.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So it's your, you want to move food through, move forward and vote on this now?
We could, I mean, I'm only one commissioner, so whatever the board wants to do.
Well, I would really appreciate a little more time because of trying to talk with Andy and Chris's references from the other side of the aisle in the governor's office. I just think that's really, really important, like I said earlier, because of my experience working with lobbyists. So if we could wait until the next meeting, I would really appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to know where the funding is coming before I vote on it.
Okay. Any other, any other comments?
Yes, Mike, I think, I think I agree with Greg and, I'm sorry, Craig and Judy. I'd like to at least wait till the next meeting, I like to see, you know, exactly what's going to be in the contract.
Yeah. Chris and Andy, any issue with that?
No, sir. And if it's okay with you, I'll put together a, a draft contract and send over so then you can have something to work off of. Whether, whether that ends up being the, the, the contract or not, you can at least get a feel for the scope of services. You know, the 30-day out clauses, a little bit, you know, background about Andy and me and the company. So that way everybody's, you know, has something to work off of.
Good. Well, I think that would make everyone happier and give us, give us an opportunity to call you and ask more questions as they come up. All right, so we've taken some time on that, but that's a time well-spent, I think. I wrote down the one phrase that I like, which is hired assassin. I think that's a, I think that's a good, that's a good analogy. I think everyone knows what we mean by that. But we appreciate your time very much. We know you're busy. And so thank you for joining us, Chris and Andy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for having us, yes, thank you for the-
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. We'll move on to item number four with Shane regarding public hearing for Z02-20.
And members of the board. So hopefully everybody can see my screen here. So the purpose of this request is in response to a decision made by the Town of Spencer about three months ago, dealing with the property at the corner of Long Ferry Road and Front Creek Road near I-85. The James Efting heirs own a tract of land, outlined in blue here, that the portion in white was located in the Town of Spencer's ETJ. And to make a long story short, all individuals involved felt at best that it would really be prudent to go ahead and address the district lines and just work with one jurisdiction, one zoning that's associated with that tract. And of course, the property owners and applicant have put in an application to designate this area here in white Zone CBI. Let's take a little closer look. If you can see this charcoal color in the top left of the map, that was the former boundary of the Town of Spencer's, their ETJ. And this little notch out here was what was removed about three months ago. It represents a total of 1.3 acres. The overall tract is 4.05, the majority of which, two-thirds of it's in the county already, and it's Zone CBI. So this request here would be to designate this area here, outlined in black with the white crosshatch, CBI and its designation. Look at the overall map of the area. Following that same line that we talked about earlier, this is Spencer's ETJ. The area in red is interstate business, which this parcel used to be zoned as such. In the lower left, outlined in yellow, is the Town of East Spencer zoning area, and they have an ED2 for this adjacent tract here. And the red for the right side of the map here is in the county zoning, the red signifying CBI designation. So again, this white area would be consistent with the residual portion and all be Zone CBI if adopted by the board. Take a look, a few of the pictures around the area, starting in the top left with Long Ferry Road at your back, looking into the primary area, this 1.3 acres, which is under the power line roadway, and also some to the left of the image here. Viveting from that point, looking due west towards Town of Spencer, you see the on-ramp to I-85 here north. And on the lower images, you have looking into the majority of the site. And then Front Creek Road is along this tree line here. And the view down east on Long Ferry. On the north side of Long Ferry, we have the Rushco at 1190. Beside it, to the right, and what, and east is the Duke Energy Substation. On the far opposite side of the end, this is the access point, Front Creek, and the new chew facility directly across the road. As we typically do, you compare the current district to the new, and pretty simple because it's unzoned. And this is what the CBI district generally permits. And a few plugs and points from the purpose and intent statement, which I think you'll see in the statements that the planning board had recommended for you. Terms of the land use plan, it's in Area 2, which borders the municipal limits, also High Rock Lake. And also, this purple swath here is the portion of the I-85 Highway Quarter Overlay 2, and a few of the recommendations from the plan here in the bottom of the screen. As with typical, we provide mailed notice on I-821, a sign was posted. And then we have the advertisement in the Salisbury Post. They have three folks give us a call, and they're primarily only curious about the request. No specified opinion as such, but just curious about the request. Planning Board did vote unanimously to recommend approval. They did offer a statement of consistency, which you have on page four of the staff report and on the screen here. And then also reasonableness on four and five of that same report. So along with separate motions for each of these, a motion for the request approved in our table. And Eddie Moore is present, should you have any questions of the applicant. But otherwise, he's here only for questions.
Shane, do you know if he has anything he needs to say?
I do not believe he does unless the board has something specific.
Okay. All right, any, any questions for Shane? All right, if there aren't any, then Shane, hang on, and we'll go ahead. I don't have a gavel to, to hit, but we'll go ahead and open for a public hearing. So April- So April, let me know if anyone, and, and of course, again, what'll happen is, um, due to some new rules because of Zoom meetings, because of COVID, uh, we'll go ahead and, and, uh, deal with this and we would pass it, uh, contingent on there not, not being any other, um, re- resistance to that. And, um, and then it'll be brought up again, I think, at the next meeting in a consent item. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll go ahead and open up for public comment, public hearing. Is there anyone that is on the Zoom that would want to speak for or against this?
If anyone wishing to speak at this time, I can press the, uh, star nine if joining by telephone or use the raise your hand function within the Zoom application. I am not seeing anyone at this time, sir.
All right. Then, uh, we'll close the public hearing. And let's see, I'll read a statement of consistency and offer this up as a, um, as a motion, Z O two dash twenty is consistent with the Eastern Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest based on the following. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the east land use plan on the I eighty-five quarter district, other adopted plans in the area and the zoning districts' purpose and intent. CBI zoning is a preferred type of zoning for this area, both currently and in the future. A larger portion of the property located in the county's jurisdiction is already, uh, also zone CBI. So I make that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, then, uh, statement of reasonableness, I'm making the form of a motion in accordance with section two, one dash three, six, two, J of the zoning ordinance. And after due consideration, the Board of Commissioners determines Z O two dash twenty to be reasonable and in the public interest. Based on the following, the reflect request is compatible with Eastern Land Use Plan and I eighty-four overlay district, the additional person, portion of the subject property is already zone CBI, no objection to adjoining property owners. So, uh, make that in form of motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right, Craig, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And, uh, do we have mo- do we have a motion to approve Z zero two dash two zero? All right, Craig motion, Judy second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those. All right, Shane, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Anthony Van, uh, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent of Operations. Uh, speaking of, uh, we were talking about, um, needs-based public school capital fund grant. I received a call a couple of weeks ago from Kevin Jones, the Chair of the School Board, asking if we would again agree uh, to them applying for this capital, uh, capital grant for the school system. And Anthony, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am Commissioner. Thank, thank, thank you for allowing me to be here this afternoon. Uh, I did want to speak with commissioners about our need, needs-based public school capital fund grant. Um, it is, uh, we did apply last year. Unfortunately, we were not selected last year. Uh, I think primarily tier one counties, um, were selected last year. And of course it is available now for tier one and tier two counties, which of course we're tier two. So the twenty twenty, uh, grant application is currently available. Um, our app, our, uh, application deadline for the grant is set for the fifteenth. Tier two counties like ourselves can receive up to ten million dollars. Uh, the grant for us would be a dollar for dollar matching fund grant. Uh, the project that would be selected would have to be for, uh, new school buildings. New projects, not renovation work. Uh, only projects that address critical deficiencies would be considered in this process. LEAs that are awarded the grant would be ineligible to receive allo- allocations from the annual public school, uh, capital funds allocations for a period of five years. So I just want to make sure that we note that, that if we were awarded this grant of ten million dollars, we would, we would be ineligible to receive, uh, our, our, basically in a nutshell, our lottery funding for five years. Um, the grant approved by the Board of Education on August the twenty-fourth. Um, the project selected that the school board selected was the K eight project that place that is was planned to replace Knox and Overton, uh, that we were working on pre-COVID. And so this grant does require the approval of the commissioners as well. And there should be a, um, the actual application should be in your packet. Um, and I would be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Uh, Anthony?
Yes.
Hey, this is, uh, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
So, um, maybe Aaron may have to answer this, but so we're going to get ten million, but we're going to lose five million in lottery funds. And then we have to match another ten million. So are we going to have to come up with fifteen million to get ten million?
Um, he, um, if you're in the process, um, when I say the matching piece, if we're, um, if we are, um, looking at doing a project as we are, the kid, the new K eight school that the school board had, had previously approved, uh, when we come to you for funding on that, um, where we're going to borrow or look to borrow the money anyway, that piece of money that we would borrow to build this project would be considered as the matching piece. That would be the matching piece for that project. In other words, they want to make sure that if they're going to give you a grant for ten million, they want to make sure that the county has skin in the game and that you're, you're willing to match ten million, get ten million.
So are we?
So.
Oh, Aaron, are we using that million dollars a year now to pay debt service?
Yeah. So, um, what, one, one, one thing I'd like to point out and I, I stand to be corrected, but, um, in, in order, if, if you go into the grant application, the page number, well, the PDF page number is six of nine. Uh, it says that, um, has, the question is, have construction documents been completed for this project? And the box is check no, but then there's a sentence that reads substantial work has been completed for this project. So the first question I would have is what substantial work has been completed? The second question I have is on the next sentence, it says anticipated or actual bid date would be June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, which would indicate that by that time, the construction documents would have been completed. And I would just like to point out to the board, as I understand it, um, there's, there there is not currently in this year's fiscal year budget, um, funds to pay for an architect to do the construction documents. So, uh, the, the second question would be, does the school have money in your reserves that you'll be able to use to pay for those construction documents? To be completed, uh, well before June twenty-fourth.
What, um, the, the plan with the June date was that, uh, a- as you know, your, your original question about what work has been completed, as you know, that we spent numerous months and months working on, uh, a K eight or, um, we were looking at replacing Knox and replacing Overton. All those were part of our consolidation plan. So, so we've got months worth of time and energy invested in it. As you know, the, the school board has selected the design team to work on the K eight project. And the design team has, they've done numerous schematic designs and lay, layouts for the, the property between, uh, Overton and Knox for a one hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot roughly facility. Um, so that, that's the work that has been done on it. I know that they have some, uh, preliminary, uh, plans for the project. Um, but as far as the, 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 the reason why we have the date of June twenty-one, that would be if the project was approved by all parties and we received the grant and we got the green light from the commissioners and the, uh, Board of Education to move forward. That's how long it would take before our design team would have a set of working drawings that they could, uh, go out for bids. And that's, that's the anticipated bid date would be the end of June. So that's how far we out, we would be out from now if we release, if we released our architect, um, after the, the grant notification was, uh, you know, we were notified about the grant. That's where the June twenty-one date comes from. And of course, um, uh, on the next page, uh, Aaron, if you, if you look at the next page, on the estimated cost for planning, uh, that the overall design cost, um, for this, for this project, for architectural services and engineering services, uh, it's about two point four million dollars. So what we were looking at was one point two million, that would be, uh, local money. And we would ask for the, um, the grant to match that. Since it's a dollar for dollar ma- match, we would ask the grant to match, uh, one point two million dollars, um, to get us through that planning phase. And, uh, many of these numbers, uh, many of these, um, categories, my understanding is can be adjusted, they can be adapt. Um, this is really a planning document, um, to, to see if we can obtain the ten million dollar grant.
So, but, but the one, the one point two million, I just, I just want to point out, if the construction documents, if, if you go out to bid in, in June twenty-one, that will, that will mean the construction documents will have been completed, which, which means that the design fees will have been paid. And the, 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 the question I have is, does the school have the money to pay for the construction documents? Or are you asking the commissioners? I, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if the commissioners approve this application, they need to be aware that to accept the grant, a budget amendment from the general fund will need to be ma- made in order for the school to meet the deadline that for the, for the deadline of, of, of going out to bid in June.
Hey, Anthony, are, are there some, are there some deadlines on here from, from the state regarding when this money has to be spent?
Um, it's five years, I think, uh, Chairman Ed's, I can verify that, but my understanding is it's, it's five years. Um, when we, when we put together the project, um, uh, financial sheet, it, it takes it out, um, later than twenty twenty-three. So I, I think it's a, it's a five-year, um, I think five years out is my understanding.
Would, would it be agreeable, um, or is there any issue with pushing that date? Um, the June twenty-fourth to, you know, six months into, uh, you know, five to six months past that to where, um, the, the next fiscal year budget could include the funding for that?
Sure. I, I do not, I don't see a problem pushing that out, uh, on this application.
I, I just, I just want to make sure, um, that, that, that when, when the county executes this, this grant application, that that, that e- everything in it aligns with what the, the actual budget is, but does that make sense?
It, it does. It does. And I think the reason why the, um, well, two reasons why the June, the end of June date was, was selected. One is that's about the, the length of time after we would receive notice that you're going to get the money. Uh, and both boards agree, that's about how long it would take moving at a rapid pace for our design team to have a set of working drawings ready to go out for bids. That's, that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is based on the, um, the design time, the construction calendar, how long it takes to put all this together and, um, and get folks in this facility. If we move at this, this date, it would be, uh, August of twenty twenty-three before we would be able to open this facility. So I, I think that's, um, that was the two components, the reason why the end of June date was selected for, for bid on twenty twenty-one.
Hey, uh, Leslie, let me ask you, I don't know if you can figure this out real quickly, but we're giving up five years of, um, of lottery proceeds. Could you tell us what the last five years? I know someone said that's five million dollars. I'm not sure that's the figure. Could you tell us what the last five years has been unless someone knows it off, off the top of their head?
Wait. We have been budgeting one point three million a year. And that has been used to pay debt service for loans that are already on our books. Um, so, um, it, i- it can vary, but we've been able to make budget each year at one point three million. So that one point three million for five years, that's six million five hundred thousand. Um, so this would be get, you know, we'd really be receiving three, yeah, three and a half million. Now, you know, we'd lose one point three million, debt service greatly declined for school projects this year. Um, a- another factor is if we're going to, we would not have to borrow the ten million um, that the state is putting up. So, um, that would reduce, go ahead, Aaron.
Look, Liz, I was just going to say, eh, eh, according to the documents, don't we, eh, don't we lose the lottery funding effective immediately once the grant is approved?
We did. We lose it in the quarter that the grant is approved. Lottery proceeds are put out on a quarterly basis.
Leslie, does that, does that include any money that goes, our lottery proceeds, does that include any money that goes to Kannapolis schools?
Um, we did get out of the one point three million and, uh, the, about one point two million we're receiving through, well, in Salisbury schools and about a hundred thousand each year is, um, through Kannapolis City Schools.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Leslie, let me ask you a question then. According to what you're telling me is if they approve this grant, then half of the lottery proceeds that we counted on in this year's budget will go away.
Correct.
That is correct.
I don't see an advantage here myself. Uh, I mean, we're going to give up six point five million at a minimum and then turn around and have to come up with ten million dollars when we've already voted to have a moratorium on any new construction or, or money takedown for this year. So I, I don't even know why we're talking about this.
I think the only reason we're talking about it is based on current lottery proceeds, it's a net three and a half million dollar gain. I think that's the only reason. Do we, do we give up six and a half million to gain ten million?
Aren't we talking about a forty million dollar project?
Fifty million.
Fifty million.
Fifty million. Oh, that's right. After the of ten, I'm sorry. And we don't know what the economy is going to be moving forward for at least probably the next six months. So a, a lot of the revenues that we count on to make this debt service may not be there. And, and I don't like forecasting a ten million dollar price tag on something and then what happens, we don't have the money. Like I said, we passed that moratorium for a reason, and I think this is one of the reasons.
Uh, Anthony, this is Aaron. I have another question. Um, and, and it, the, the answer may be in front of me and I just can't find it. But if we apply, are we required to accept it or just this the first phase in the process? Would this need to come back before the board if it was awarded? Or is the? if it was awarded? Or is the application an acceptance?
Um, the way that I read the assurance page, uh, which is at the end of the document, um, it's signed by the Commissioner Chair and the Board of Education Chair. Um, it, it basically says that both boards are together on this. Um, whether, whether or not you could, you could say we don't want it after we get it, um, I'm, I'm assuming that's a possibility, but I don't know for sure, Aaron. That would be a call I'd have to make. I mean, I, I don't think that you're, if, if you, if you're awarded it, um, I, I would think if you didn't come up with your match, then you wouldn't get the money. Or I, I would have to make a call to verify that. But my assumption is that, um, if, if both chairs sign it, then the intent is that we're planning on moving forward with it.
And you have to have this application in by what, the fifteenth?
Yes, sir, the fifteenth. So this is something that we would need, um, uh, which is the first part of next week. So this is something that really, if, if we were going to move forward with it, we would need to get it signed and, and sent this week, into this week.
Well, that, the, um, the fifth bullet sits, uh, well, it's, uh, the fifth bullet says upon receiving the grant, we will enter into an agreement. So I guess there, there is an additional step. Um, and I imagine, you see what I'm, uh,
Right, right.
Upon receiving a needs-based grant award, we will enter into an agreement with the Department of Public Instruction detailing the use of the grant funds. So it looks like, um, you know, there, there will be an additional agreement based on that bullet, uh, and that both boards would probably have to approve that again. Um, but as, as, as a staff person, the only thing I would say to the board is the first bullet, um, when the county signs this, the que- the statement is the information provided and this proposal is correct and complete. And if you go back up Randy to page six of nine, um, in order, uh, scroll down a little bit. So the anticipated or actual bid date, June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one. So two things could happen. One, the date could be moved, um, out further into next fiscal year, or, uh, a second thing is the board could approve a budget amendment paying for, agreeing to pay for, um, the, what I think was a one point two million dollar, um, architect, uh, or, you know, architect fees for, for construction documents. Leslie, does that sound close to being correct?
Yes, sir.
Is, is that required? I mean, if they give you ten million dollars, are, are we required to just split everything? Could, when you receive the ten million dollars, could you pay for the two point four million dollar, uh, planning fees out of that ten million?
Planning fees are something that can be charged against the ten million dollars. The only thing that I've seen that says that they would not use the ten million dollars for is to purchase property, but they would use it for engineering, designing, construction, uh, planning, those type of things.
So it's possible then that we move the date back. If we approve this today and you went ahead and applied for it, uh, then, then, uh, if we pushed it into fiscal year twenty one, uh, that would help. And then, um, um, i- if, if you got the grant, then you could pay for the two and a half million dollars in planning and the county not have to do any budget amendments in twenty twenty, uh, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. And, uh,
I'm not, Greg, this is Leslie and I, I'm not sure it would work that way. I mean, it's a dollar for dollar grant. And usually, you know, if we were saying, okay, here we're going to submit two point four million dollars and we'd like to be reimbursed through grant proceeds, generally it's going to have a factor there of fifty percent. So we would submit two point four million and we would receive one point two.
And, and that's the reason why we, um, put it in the chart like we did with the one point two, one point two. So I, I, I agree with Leslie on that.
Okay. Well, that was my question.
Yeah.
So everyone, this, if we vote for this today, are we saying that we're supporting a fifty million dollar Knox Middle School at this point? Because I don't recall that we've had a vote on anything like that here. And I know they have a school board election up and I don't know what their vote was. You know, when we bought the, uh, we had the issue with the mall, the, um, LGC said, well, you shouldn't really be borrowing money that close. I know we're not borrowing money at this point, but how do we know that they're going to continue with this? And so I suppose that this can only be used for that project, right? Or can it be used for, you know, whatever, another school somewhere else?
Um, under this application, it's, it's for this project.
Well, I'll reiterate, we have not had a meeting to discuss borrowing fifteen million dollars for the school system. And I don't like being forced here at the last moment. This, it's continuous with the board, with the school board. They always come at the last second and have to make us vote on something. I know you've had this information for months and why you hadn't put it together and brought it to us before now is beyond me, but I'm tired of being pressured at the last minute into making a decision when it doesn't have to be that way. And I'm with Mike, there's an election in fifty eight days, this might change. So I don't, I don't want to put, I'm just not going to vote for it. I'm just going to tell you that. So there.
And we were, it was indicated to us that, that, um, that the commissioners had approved or would be available, fifteen million dollars are available now and sixty million dollars would be funded in twenty twenty one. Now, maybe we misunderstood that as a, as a school system.
To anybody. Look, that's all I'm going to tell you. I, I have not voted or made that commitment to anybody for any of those kind of funds. So, so there you have it.
I think, um, and I'm still in favor of, now that we've paid off the other debts to build some more things. But, uh, you know, I do agree with Craig, we did a moratorium on everything. We had a lot of projects that we were looking at, not only for the school system, but for the mall and for, uh, we had a couple different, uh, waste sites that we were looking at. So we had a lot of projects that we're looking at. We put everything on hold. So I thought that when we said that, the school system may know that, you know, we don't know what the future is going to be right now, even though we're still in favor of borrowing funds at some point. I just, I don't be, um, committed to fifty million dollars today because, like I said, I, I don't know that, that, um, the particulars on this one yet. And what if it changes? Plus, you know, if we're, we're going to have to come up with funds, um, to pay the debt services. I just, you know, to me, I don't know that it, that at this point because of the economy, where we're at. And, you know, I do think we do get, sometimes get information at the last minute, but I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know that I'm, uh, going to be able to support this today either.
Anthony, when was this grant released?
Um, I can go back and try to find that information, but I know that we, we put it out there, um, as soon as we received it. I don't know the exact date. I can get that for you, Commissioner, but, um, but we published it and put it out there as soon as we received it.
So you're talking six months ago, four months ago?
No, no, um, um, we put it out there, the, the, the date that we have on the application is August the tenth.
Okay, thanks.
So we really are in a pickle here because, um, I mean, to get the ten million dollar grant, then they start doing all their planning, spending the planning costs. We got to come up with a million and a quarter. We don't know what the economy looks like yet. I mean, I hate to give up three and a half million.
Mr. Chairman, you're not factoring in the money that we'll give up this year for the, uh,
No, I, no, I, I get it. No, I get it.
Five over the next five plus probably a half a million dollars this year. We're really looking at giving it seven million dollars.
Well, I don't think that's, it, it would be a total of five years. It's not going to be five plus.
I didn't say.
It's going to be
Couple of court, couple of quarters.
This year.
Well, I, I think they'd go a total of five years.
Well, we really don't know.
Yeah. All right.
You know, we have, we have told the, the school, now this was a year ago, that we told the schools that in the coming years, we'd have a lot of money available for them for projects. But this is the first time that I've seen anything on the Knox project, uh, specifically this type of money that I'm aware of. And certainly I don't, you know, nobody's come before us to talk with us about this, uh, project and how much, how expensive it was going to be. Um,
Greg, do you remember, do you remember when the discussion about K eight at Knox in Oregon started? Because it seems to me it's over a year ago and I know it hasn't come before the commission, but I'm just saying that it's been out there, Jim.
And there's been a lot of co- conversation about it through the newspaper. Uh, there's been no, um, talks with the Board of Ed, with the, with the Board of Commissioners here about what, what the project's going to be and, and consolidation. And, uh, we understand they're going to use the, the land out there. We, you know, I, I understand what they're, we're talking about. Uh, but this is, uh, we're talking about, you know, we're not talking about a ten million dollar commitment. We're talking about a fifty million dollar commitment on this project with only three and a half million dollars actually coming from the state.
But I agree with you, Jim. It's just, to me, the timing is not right for this type of, uh, commitment. I'm not saying I wouldn't vote to do Knox. That's not my point. My point being this is just not the right time and we haven't been given proper information to make a decision on. I don't like making decisions on fifty million dollars in ten minutes. And so I, I'm just saying that to me, it just doesn't work.
Well, and even more so, we're still in the position of we don't, we don't, we don't know what the future holds. We don't know. Are we, are we going to be in the same position during next budget time? And now we've committed ourselves to a fifty million dollar expenditure, um, that, that we can't pay for. So I agree at, you know, three and a half million or whether it's three million or two and a half million. If, if I had, uh, six and a half or seven million dollars somewhere and I could give it to someone, they give me ten back, I'd say, how many times can I do that? But the, the problem is, is the, the debt that you're acquiring on the other side, and we know about as much today as we did in May and June when we were setting up our budget for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. We're, we're as confident today as we were back then. We don't know anything. We don't know anything about what our budget's going to look like. So are y'all ready to, to vote on this?
Yes, sir. Do we need to vote or?
We need, do we need to?
Or do we just not take it up?
Yeah. Jay, what do we do?
I, I think it's in your discretion. Um, if, if you need more time, I mean, take more time.
Well, they've got to have the application in by the fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, I think I'm with Judy. I think we can just, um, say to Anthony, thank you for coming, but we don't know anything more today than we did four months ago when we were setting budget and we can't commit to, uh, ten million because, or we can't accept a ten million dollar grant because we can't commit to a fifty million dollar spend. Anthony, can we leave it at that?
Yes, sir.
All right. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's move on. Mr. Muir, good to have you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, looking at the calendar for next month, um, staff have noticed that the moratorium for the solar energy facilities, uh, will expire on October sixth. I think, as you know, um, based on an article in the paper, and I think, um, I also sent an email a couple of weeks ago, we as a staff have not had any real meaningful interactions or conversation with the planning board, uh, on this topic. And as such, we had conveyed to the, the citizens in the community that have been following this topic, as well as those in the, uh, in the industry, that it is highly likely that, uh, staff would recommend the commission consider extending the moratorium to, to a point where we can do what we do. Um, and that's meet and have a pretty detailed conversation about what this, uh, proposed text amendment process looks like.
So what we would need to do is, uh, today is just schedule a public hearing for October fifth. Um, that's all you're asking us to do today?
Yeah. And if that's, um, the direction of the board at the, uh, the next meeting, we'll have a moratorium ordinance and, um, for your consideration, then we can move forward from there.
Okay. Uh, do we need to vote on that, Ed? On setting a public hearing? Yeah.
It, it wouldn't be bad to do so. I think, uh, you can make that known if you're intent.
All right, Commissioners, I make a motion that we set a public hearing for October fifth, twenty twenty meeting regarding the solar energy system moratorium. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Muir.
Thank you.
Uh, Aaron's up next, Aaron Poplin.
Little sub in for Mr. Poplin here. And so this is a permit to exceed request that, uh, is from the Dorset Chapel, United Church of Christ, requesting that permit to exceed the noise ordinance for their hundred and seventh anniversary celebration on October the fourth. It's, it's really just a church service with, uh, music and it'll last between eight thirty that morning and one thirty in the afternoon. If you look at the map here, their church facility is located at twelve eighty Hollywood Drive and it's Lincoln Ave and, uh, Maroni Lane. Uh, well, let me give you a little detail. So the, the stage location will be propelled here and speakers facing the building. The church owns this entire block here so they can use this area for parking and, um, and whatnot. But kind of surprised, but there, the insurance office did receive a complaint last month from a event that took place there. And the deputy that responded just informed the, the church just put in a permit to exceed request. And after Aaron had talked with the pastor there, this is the only one that they do have planned. So this would be a one-time thing. Per noise ordinance, section fourteen eleven, it does have a few exceptions, fireworks, parades and athletic events, but nothing that directly relates to church service. So that's why we're here, but this application meets all standards for approval.
All right, good. Any questions for Shane? All right, if not, then I'll, uh, bang the gavel here and we'll, uh, open up April to see if there's April to see if there's any public comment. We'll wait for a moment.
Yes, sir. If anyone joining as an attendee would like to press, uh, star nine if joining by phone or use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom application, we'll get you acknowledged for the public comment portion of this. Looks like we have one guest. If you'll state your name. Uh, Rick, you have the floor.
This is Pastor Rick Galloway from Dorset Chapel, United Church of Christ. Just wanna thank the, the county commissioners for uh, hearing our permit to have, uh, to be able to exceed the law, um, the noise ordinance, and thank you for your time today.
Uh, thank Pastor Rick. Is it gonna be good noise?
It's gonna be good noise, sir.
All right. A joy, it, will it be a joyful noise?
Yes, sir.
All right, if it's a joyful noise, then that's good.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Greg.
Yes, sir. All right, is there anyone else? April?
No, sir. I do not see any other hands at this time.
All right, then we'll close, uh, the public comment, and, uh, we have a motion to approve, uh, PE zero one dash two zero for Dorset Chapel Unity, United Church of God to exceed. All right, good. Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Pastor Rick, uh, y'all enjoy.
Thank you so much. Thank.
My brother. Take care of me.
God bless. All right.
Thanks, Shane. All right. Manager Church.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is in response to uh, the board's request at a recent meeting requesting that I provide options on consolidation. The first twenty, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six slides, um, is a part of a presentation that Jill Moore provided, and as, as I talk, uh, Randy, if you'll just kinda go through each one kind of briefly, you can just, until you get, get to our presentation. We have studied this. Uh, Jay has worked really hard. And we're providing this to the board so that it can be a part of the minutes. I'll be glad if the board would like for me at the end of the, our option presentation, go back and tou- touch on any of the specific details or legislative reports in, uh, Ms. Moore's presentation. Um, also, in the event that the board were to decide to schedule a public hearing, uh, this could be something that the citizens and the board and staff can go back and review, um, and have access to. It's a good presentation, but, but unless the board directs me tonight to, to go into that in, in great detail, I, I won't do that. So with, with that said, uh, based on what, what Randy just went through really fast, um, we use that and, uh, we use the, the jet, the law governing this to provide options for Rowan County. Let's, so let me first point out that the current governance in Rowan County for social services and, uh, the health department looks like this. Uh, the Board of Commissioners appoint all of the Health Board members, and the Health Board, hires and supervises the Health Director. The Board of Commissioners, uh, appoint, hires and supervises the County Manager. The Board of Commissioners appoint some of the, uh, Social Services Board, and some are appointed by a uh, state entity, uh, and then an additional member is appointed by both boards, and you end up with five board members. Um, so that's what it currently looks like in Rowan County. The Board of Commissioners do not have any authority insofar as, as, as providing directions or supervising the Social Services Director or the Health Director. So if, if you could, if you have a piece of paper in front of you, i- if you could write down the following, um, one A, and then on the next line, no, Randy, if you'll go back up, you'll just stay here for a second. I'm asking the Commissioners, if you'll, if you'll write down, uh, one A, one B, and one C, and then two A, two B, and two C, and then three A, three B, and three C. I'm gonna provide nine options. And if you don't like one of the options, just put a X uh, on, on what's, what you just wrote down, and if you, if you did write that down, you should have nine, uh, nine lines in front of you. Uh, again, it's option one A, uh, one B, one C, two A, two B, two C, three A, three B, and three C. So option one A, and under all the option ones, uh, in- involves the Board of Commissioners um, becoming, um, the Board of Health or Social Services. Um, that can be done. The Board of Commissioners can become, uh, the Social Services Board and Health Board, and then they would become the, um, supervisor. Uh, they would supervise, hire and supervise the Social Services Director and Health Director. And County Manager is in here just so, um, because as, as we get to other options, you'll see how the chart changes. Under this option, one A, a Health Advisory Committee is required. Um, and there's some additional requirements for Commissioners, um, but thi- this, this can be done. Um, next slide. Option one B, um, Board of Commissioners become the social, sh- Social Services Board. Um, the Board of Commissioners supervise the Social Services Director, County Manager. I stay with you, by the way, through all options. Uh, so, um, uh, and under this one, the Health Board remains the Health Board, and the Health Director reports to the Health Board. Option one C, uh, the Board of Commissioners, if the Board of Commissioners wanted to, they could become the Health Board, and the Health Director would report directly to the Board of Commissioners. Um, but like one A, the Board of Commissioners would need to appoint a Health Advisory Board. So I'll take a moment now to, to, to point out that the Health Advisory Board should reflect, um, the makeup, or it's actually a, a committee, uh, the same membership as the Appointed Health Board. So the Appointed Health Board that you have now, even though it wouldn't be the Health Board, it would be the Health Advisory Committee. They just would not be uh, responsible for, um, supervising and hiring the Health Director. Under.
Can I ask you a question on the Health Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir.
Strictly an advisory committee, it's like for the Airport Advisory Board and those kind of things? Or does it actually have some type of authority?
It, it is strictly an advisory, uh, committee that make, that, that provides advice on public health matters. Um, and if the board delegates um, acc- accreditation activities to the advisory, um, committee, it can do that. But the advisory committee does not, um, hire or supervise the director. They're just there in a, in an advisory capacity, but it is required by state statute that it be there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so under option one C, Social Services Board remains, Social Services Director reports to the Social Services Board. Okay. Now, now we're getting into option two. Under option two, you create what's called a consolidated, uh, human services agency. Um, and the board appoints a consolidated human services board, and this is a board with authority. There is limits on the authority, but it does have authority, and there's specific statutory guidelines on who is required, uh, to be on that board. Um, the membership, for example, is a county commissioner, four consumers of human services, a psychologist, a pharmacist, an engineer, dentist, optometrist, veterinarian, social worker, registered nurse, two physicians, and one must be a psychiatrist, and up to twelve others if the board, uh, so is so inclined to appoint more. Um, under this model, um, if the board were to decide to create a consolidated human service agency consisting of social services and health, um, and you wanted to appoint the consolidated human services board, um, the County Manager still hires and supervises the CHS Director with advice and consent from the consolidated human services board. Okay? Um, now, this option's a little more complicated. When we get to option three, you, option three completely, well, the board can become the CHS Board. So, um, if you'll go to option two B, here's an example of, of, of a, uh, of a plan. If the board wanted to create a um, consolidated human service agency that consisted of social services and veteran services, the board could do that. Then they could create the Human Services Agency, appoint a, uh, human service, a, a consolidated human services board, and the County Manager would hire and supervisor, uh, the CHS Director with advice and consent from the CHS Board. You could leave the Health Board, um, a- as it is, and the Health Director could report to the Health Board. Next op- option two C, same thing as, as, as two B, except uh, in this particular scenario, it's the Health He- Health Department and Veteran Services that become the Consolidated Human Service Agency. Um, County Manager hires and supervises the CHS Director with advice and consent of the CHS Board. Uh, under this particular, um, option, Social Services Board could remain, and the Social Services Director would report to the Social Services Board. So now we're moving into option three. This is the mo- this, uh, this is simpler than option two. Uh, what happens here is the Board of Commissioners, let's say, decided, if, if the board decided tonight that it wanted to consult, create a consolidated human services agency consisting of social services and health, you, uh, the board could say, we wanna do, we like option three A, this is what we wanna do. You could have a, you do a public notice, have a public hearing, and in thirty days, you could pass a resolution, and it would be done. And what you would do, you would create the, um, Consolidated Human Services, Human Services Agency. And then, rather than creating a board, you assume all the powers and duties of the board, because if you remember back up in option one, A, B, and C, you assume the duties of the Health and DSS Board. So you can also assume the, the duties of the Consolidated Human Services Board. So under this model, uh, the County Manager hires and supervises the CHS Director with advice and consent from the board. Go back up, Randy, to, to C. You see, um, here, um, the manager has consent of the CHS Board, not the Commissioners. Go to option, uh, three A. There i- there is no board. It's just the Commissioners, the Manager, and the CHS Director, and a Health Advisory Committee. Um, now, it, while we're on this one, there's two more. I'll just point out that the Consolidated Human Services Director can be the Social Services Director, can be the Health Director. Um, in some counties, it's the Assistant County Manager. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, a full-time position. There are some, some requirements, um, that the uh, Consolidated Human Service Director, uh, perform, but it's not, doesn't necessarily have to be all that that, uh, e- employee does. Um, again, it could be the Assistant Manager. Um, it, it is just a statutory appointment, and they appoint the staff of the Human Services Agency with the County Manager's approval. So per statute, the County Manager approves the appointment through the CHS Director. Um, um, so under this option three A, you, because the Health Department's involved, and there's not a consolidated human services board that consists of, you remember the, the professional, uh, titles I, 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 I read out earlier? You are required to have the Health Advisory Committee. Option three B, um, so if the board decided that it wanted to, uh, consolidate social services and veteran services, the board would need to say that, you know, that's something that you're, you're thinking about doing, um, and you do a public notice, have a public hearing in thirty days, and then after that thirty days is passed, um, the board could act upon this, and what they would do is they would create the Consolidated Human Services Agency that consisted of social services and veteran services. Then they would assume all the powers and duties of the Consolidated Human Services Board, just as back in option one, the board has authority to assume all the powers and duties of the Health Board and Social Services Board. The County Manager hires and supervises the CHS Director with advice and consent from the Board of Commissioners. Now, under this particular option, the Health Board remains as it is, and the Health Director, uh, reports to the Health. Option three C, um, suppose that the board said that the board wanted to consolidate veteran services and the Health Department. The board would need to state that's something they're, they're interested in doing, do a public notice, um, have a public hearing in thirty days, and after that thirty days is passed, the board could create a Consolidated Human Services Agency consisting of veteran services and the Health Department, assume all the powers and duties of the Consolidated Humans Services Board. Um, just like in option one, where you can become the Health Board and DSS Board. Under, under this option, the County Manager hires and supervises, uh, the Consolidated Human Services Director with advice and consent of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, then you have the CHS Director, who also, part of the statutory, uh, requirement is that the CHS Director acts as a secretary and staff to the Consolidated Human Services Board under the direction of the County Manager, and that, that is in statute that, that, that that they're required to do that. Then the Health Director and the Veteran Services Director would report to the Consolidated Human Services Director. Under this option, Social Services Board remains the same, and the Social Services Director reports to the Social Services Board. Next slide. There is, there are other options, uh, that, that could, that could possibly be looked at. One is to explore creating a di- a district health department, which as I understand it is a multi-county health department. Another option is to explore a combined public health authority. Another option is to explore a combined public health authority with Cabarrus County. And, and, and that's another option. Or you could e- explore combining a public health authority with any county that became a public health authority. But as I understand it, there is, and Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, there has only been one public health authority in the history of North Carolina as of last week now.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, and that one's no more.
Yeah, so, but those, those are other options. I, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. Again, I'll tell you that Jay and Siobhan and Leslie and Kelly all have been, they have spent a lot of time helping, helping me research this. This is not something I just put together and, and, and learned overnight. I had their good help and their advice in doing that. I'd like to thank, thank them very much for that. Any, i- if the board decides to move forward with any of these options, staff stand ready to implement whatever it is the board would like to do. And, and I can assure you that we'll do it in a professional manner, just as the board would like for us to do it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Aaron, can you put the option one C back up, please?
Okay, one, one C. You become the commissioners of the board under, under this one. I assume you have a question.
No, what I was gonna say is I just want to make sure we don't combine social services with the health department. I just want to keep the health department separate and, and let the commissioners have control over how that's being processed and, and run. Because that, to me, is the deficient area that we have with these two departments. DSS has done a great job, I think, and I don't really see any need to combine the two. And, you know, we've had a lot of turnover here lately. And I'd, I'd hate for some, somebody as, as big as your, you know, to combine health services, that person leaving, and then there we are with nobody. So I like one C, I think personally is the best. And I like keeping the health advisory committee on board, too. Just my opinion.
That's a lot. I mean, and it's very complicated. I don't think we're going to solve anything tonight, but I think that's something that we need to think about and discuss.
I don't disagree.
So Aaron, what would be, I think you talked earlier about if the board of commissioners became the health board, there's additional training that we have to go through each year?
Yeah, if, if the board of commissioners assume the health board powers and duties, they're required to adopt local public health rules, adjudicate disputes about local rules or local fines. And there's some accreditation activities. One is being trained in service as a public health board. As I understand it, that's, that, that, that's, that's not a very lengthy process. I'm sure Commissioner Klusman could tell us, I, I think it's a couple of hours, Commissioner Klusman, every so often?
No, I don't recall.
Assure the development, and I'm just reading from Jill Moore's slide, implementation and evaluation of local health services to promote, to protect or promote health, participate, participate in the establishment of public health goals and objectives. Oh, thanks, Randy. Randy found it. Assure the resources to, to implement the, I mean, well. And then the advisory committee, you know, you have to appoint an advisory committee, which it has to be made up of what the, how the current health board is, is made up. So if this, if, let's just say hypothetically, if the board was interested in option one C, then the health board you already have in place, you, the, the board still needs that board as an advisory board. It's just that the board would now supervise the health director, just like the board supervises the county manager. So.
Could you put three C on there, so we can compare the two?
Okay, so three, three C. Under, under this option, the board of commissioners, you, you create a consolidated human services agency. And then you assume the powers and duties of that board. And that, the powers and duties of that board, Randy. Right there. They assume all the powers and duties of the health board slash social services board. But under three, option three C, it would just be the health board. They advise and consent to hiring and firing of the director. So instead of actually making, instead of voting to hire, fire, they just advise and consent to hiring and firing of the director. They plan and recommend a budget, which, I mean, we're all involved with that anyway. Assure compliance with state and federal laws, recommend creation of human service programs, and perform public relations and, and advocacy functions. So if you'll go back down to three, three C, so the difference between three C and one C, I believe the one that Commissioner Pierce said he preferred, is that the board would not supervise the day-to-day activities of, of the health director. That would be supervised through the consolidated human services director under the direction of the county manager. The board of commissioners would still set, set, you know, all policy, you know, you know, policy and direction and, and whatever that would be that the board set, the county manager would make sure that it was, that was completed. So those are the, those are the two differences. One C is the health director reports directly to the commissioners. Three C, reports to the county manager with advice and consent of, of the BOC. But that would not be the health director, unless the health director was the CHS director, director, or the veteran services director was, was the CHS director. So it just depends on who the CHS director is.
Hey, could you put that last slide that you had, that had the two columns with the different?
Is that, is that the one you're talking about?
Uh, yes.
There's another good slide. It's on page 14, Randy? Yeah, and so this kind of, this kind of summarizes in, in general what, what my presentation showed. One, what I created, the one in my presentation is the same in the, the one here. The two is the same, and the three is the same. It's just that there's different options under there. And so as you see, one, board of commissioners hires. Two, manager hires with advice and consent of the consolidated human services board. And three, manager hires with advice and consent of the board of commissioners. But, but keep in mind, that, that is not necessarily, under three, that's not necessarily the health director, social services director, or, or veteran services director. That's, that's the consolidated human, human services director. Which could be any of those three, or an assistant county manager, so long as the board of commissioners consented to it.
I think, I think I prefer three C only because I don't know, having the health director report directly to the commissioners if, if they would get the oversight that they may need. You know, since we're not full-time employees like the county manager is, or the human services director. So that's the only reason I think I would probably prefer three C.
Aaron, I'm the instigator in this problem, I guess. Calling for it last time, last meeting we had, and thank you for all of these options that you've given us here. At that time, we allocated a lot of money to the health department to help with the issues that, that, that environmental services was having. Can, can you update us about whether that money has had any effect on the department? And, and if there's been any changes in that ser- in the services at this point?
Yes, hold on one second.
Thank you for speaking. I thought you'd die.
No, no, I, I, I'm, I'm here. Okay, on, on September first, received an update from the health director. And in that update, in, in part, or a portion of it, states that the environmental health specialists are scheduled to begin on the following dates. On-site program specialists, September 14th, environmental health specialist onsite, September 14th, environmental health specialist onsite, September 21st. And then an environmental health specialist, food and lodging, September 8th to 2020. So it appears that the measures that the board of commissioners put in place has filled some of the positions. But that, that's the only update I have right now.
So Aaron, we've only hired one new food and lodging person?
A- as of September the first. Unless I'm overlooking.
I don't think you are, yeah.
U- update. That, that's the most recent update that, that I have.
Yeah, and then all of the onsite septic positions are all full now, right?
That's as of September 1st, unless, unless there's been a change. Now, I don't, I don't believe in, anyone has, anyone has started yet. I, I think their start dates are on the 14th, too. And then, then there was another one. According to this memorandum from the health director, would, would be September 21st is when the the last of the three will start.
Well, that worked. Good job, you guys. Hopefully whittle that septic wait time down a lot.
You know, I'm, I'm wondering, since we took these dramatic steps, I mean, if we're taking folks from other counties, is it a matter of time before they do the same thing? And we're, which I think is a good reason for us to have more oversight from the county level. Because this may, you know, once we start taking people, then people are gonna have to take other people off the pay. And so this may give us more oversight as to, you know, when these issues start popping up, instead of letting them sit for a while.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Mike. And I think that other counties have been coaching our folks for a long time, so mostly in the sheriff's department and EMS. But, yeah, it took pay increases, so I think we're good now.
No, I think, I agree with you. I think we are good for now, but other counties are gonna have to step up to do the same thing we did. So I just, I don't know, I just, like I said, I think we need a little bit more. That's why I'm in favor of making some changes. Because I don't know, I know, I don't know how long ago it was, you know, that they were having a problem with, and I was contacting Aaron. Lady from my church was having septic issues, or the neighbor was, and it was leaking onto their property. And I think they didn't, one time she, someone called her, and then they didn't call back for like three months. I had to keep going back to Aaron to get somebody to call her. So I know there's been issues. Like I said, I think in the long term, maybe if, if there's some changes made, everyone will be a citizen.
I know that Nina's on the call. Nina, do you have any updates for us, health director?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So yes, lots of good work over the last month, since you have a plot, have approved the, the bonuses. We went right into, so the positions were posted that night. We, I believe we had that special called meeting on Tuesday. Positions went up Tuesday night. We had our first interview on on Friday. We filled positions very quickly. All food, all onsite positions are filled. They're slated to start mid-September. We have filled one food and lodging position. We have one remaining open. We, we are taking a very special look at those that we're interviewing. We have interviewed several food and lodging positions, but we don't think that the other interview, other folks were the correct fit. We've got some other interviews coming up, though. We are also interviewing this week the office assistant three for the environmental health program. So those should be filled very quickly. I also did spend a lot of time in an environmental health, and Aaron and I had a really good conversation and about how to continue to serve the Rowan County population appropriately. And so with that conversation, I went down to the board, board, I'm sorry, went down to environmental health and called every single person that was on the, the waiting list. And called every single person that was on the, the waiting list. So as the Commissioners know, our waiting list reached about eight to ten weeks. And that was due to terminations, to retirements, to not being able to fill the positions. And I had some really tough conversations. But I believe our citizens are very understanding. They are very generous. They also were very. Just to hear, just to hear from me, and the plan of action that has been put into place. A lot of them kind of just had a sigh of relief, like, oh, okay, that, that's all I need to hear. And so it was a very good, very good conversations. I had a couple more conversations with the public today. I had someone come visit me about onsite, and I explained to them our plan. And there was a sigh of relief. I think that relief is coming from the fact that the county put something in, in, into action. And that there is an actual plan in place. So. I did send that memo. I did send it to Erin, but I believe I CC'd the rest of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Health, too. So I can resend that update to everybody if needed.
All right, Nina, thank you. All right.
Before Nina goes, the Office Assistant Three, that's to make sure we've got somebody live answering the phone all the time, right?
Yeah, so we had to terminate our Office Assistant early this year. And so what occurred, Judy, was that left, because we had to terminate her. That left our inspectors being pulled from the field in order to cover the front desk. So of course, that added to the, the slowness. So we do have someone there already. This Office Assistant Three is there to assist, so when she goes to lunch, this other Office Assistant will be, be there to cover. That is correct, yes.
All right, well, thank you, Nina. Any other questions for Nina? All right, thanks, Nina. All right, so Commissioners. What do y'all want to do with consolidation discussion? Just take this information back and study it? And then we can bring it back up at another time? What do you, what do y'all want to do?
I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
All right.
It's complicated to make a decision tonight on it, I think. But I, I don't want us to totally forget about it.
I think, and I'm fine with us studying it some more, because it is complicated, but I think we should go ahead and set a date. For the next, next time it's on the agenda. So it doesn't fall through the cracks like sometimes we, we tend to do. I mean, do we want to have it on the next agenda?
Well, I'd like to have it the first meeting in November. That's just my preference.
No, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. All right, well then, let's, let's move on. We've got presentation. Post overdose response team presentation. From Nina.
So, you can hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I, I'm actually not gonna be doing the presentation, or Port Team will. I just wanted to introduce them. Remind the Commissioners that you guys have, all of you have been very supportive throughout the years. In two thousand and seventeen, where it seemed like our overdoses, two thousand seventeen and eighteen peaked. It was very difficult for Rowan County. It wasn't just Rowan County, but it was national and statewide. You all supported a opioid forum, and so we had our first opioid forum. At the Ag Building in two thousand and seventeen. From that year, we continued on every year. We've had a substance abuse forum every year since then. To discuss issues of substance use and abuse, addiction. I believe last year, we, we focused on women, pregnancy, and families. And how addiction as a disease can impact the entire family and, and, and not just. The person that is suffering from the actual addiction. So dealing with all of that and seeing our overdoses continue to increase. The Public Health Department, along with EMS and Centers for Prevention Services out of Charlotte. Applied for a grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. This, we were awarded the grant in two thousand, early two thousand nineteen, so January two thousand and nineteen. We were awarded about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That, that money was to help with substance use disorder. And opioid epidemic in Rowan County. And what it did was gave us the funding to put together the Port Team. Or the post overdose response team. The Port Team has three members on the team. We have Community Paramedic, held by Jeff Brown. Harm Reduction Coordinator, held by Natalie Arrington. And Peer Support Specialist, had by, held by Ashley Creek. I, I am a support person for the team. I organize our meetings and, and kind of help problem solve and deal with any roadblocks that the team. May or may not deal with. But I do want to introduce the team to you. Our Harm Reduction Coordinator, Ari, Natalie will be doing the, the presentation for you right now. And if she is ready and all set up, I'll let her take it away.
All right, everyone, I'm actually not gonna be doing the presentation by myself. I did bring the rest of the Port Team in with me. And Jeff Brown, our EMS Pyramid, Community Paramedic, will actually be starting off once I get the screen share set up. So just give me one second so I can make sure I have everything. Okay, and Jeff, whenever you're ready.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having us. My name is Jeff Brown, Community Paramedic with Rowan EMS. And a member of Rowan County's original post overdose response team, or commonly referred to as PORT. Other team members are Ashley Creek and Natalie Arrington. Current, like Nina said, currently the program is. Made possible and funded by a grant, by, received from a Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. Which is set to expire December thirty-first of this year. During the presentation, we'll discuss the program's purpose and objectives. Some of our activities, pre-COVID, and current trends related to the opioid use in Rowan. Factors that increase, and some of our results and success stories. Okay, Natalie?
We already went over this one a little bit, so I'll skip this one.
Okay, these are some of our purpose and objectives. We do our best to connect people with, that are inactive use, to provide resources, encourage them to sit recovery. Increase linkage to care, decrease calls to first responders and EMS. A decreased cost, and decrease the number of overdose deaths. Creating initial contact with participants within the first seventy-two hours from the EMS encounter. And then follow up with each participant in one, three, and six month intervals. Okay. We started community by connecting members to resources and treatment. We host support meetings. Distribute Narcan. Narcan is the medication that reduce, reduces the effect of opioids. And we assist in training the community members and organizations on its administration. We do have a mobile Narcan distribution stations periodically, where we head out Narcan in the community. And that's really proven to save a lot of lives. And also provide, provide harm reduction and prevention education. Who do serve? Mostly it's men, twenty-five to forty-four years old. Although we. Certainly. Address a wide variety of ages. That seems to be our, our main group that uses our services. From anywhere that in the Bogus, we've had three hundred and sixty-two overdoses, just opioid overdoses here in Rowan County. Prior to the COVID era, we averaged twenty-five point three overdoses a month. During the COVID area, excuse me, era, starting back in March. We are averaging fifty-seven point eight overdoses per month. So it's more than double and in a direct correlation there. Okay? Of those over, well over three hundred overdoses. Only seventy have ended up resulting in trips to the emergency room. This is partly because of port and its availability in the community. And the success we're having. And, but the biggest part is due to Narcan, either distributed in the community by, by the Port Team. Or administered by EMS, first responders, and law enforcement. Okay?
So now Jeff kind of laid out for you guys what the numbers are like as a result of COVID and pre, pre-COVID. So I'm gonna talk to you about why we're seeing that increase. Right now, based on across state and in the county. Fentanyl is our main culprit for why we're seeing so many overdoses and overdose deaths. Fentanyl is dangerous for two reasons, its potency and its versatility. Now, it says that fentanyl is fifty to a hundred times stronger than morphine. It's made in labs and it's made to treat intense pain for hospice and cancer patients. But it's made its way onto the streets, and honestly, that fifty to a hundred times is an estimate. Being, being mindful that the fentanyl that we're talking about is made for street drugs. So these people aren't in labs, sometimes they aren't necessarily trained chemically. So they may be accessing chemicals that, they might be taking the runaround as far as when it comes to making their drugs. So it's really no telling the exact potency of what we're seeing out on the streets. There are also other versions of other analogs of the fentanyl drug that are much stronger. Sometimes a hundred to thousands of times stronger than morphine. And in addition to that, fentanyl is very versatile. So unlike heroin that is required to be made with the natural poppy plant. You can make fentanyl with chemicals that are easier to find and cheaper to buy. And it can be made into peel, pressed form, powder form, or liquid form. So we're seeing, so we're hearing reports of our port participants. We're seeing, we're meeting people. When we are out doing our mobile Narcan stations that are reporting having overdoses, not from only IV drugs. But also, we've had people that say they had the intentions of buying cocaine and ended up overdosing and it was fentanyl. Or buying Xanax pills off the street and they overdosing because of fentanyl that is in it. So those are some of the concerns that we have right now. And here's another visual to kind of show you the potency of those drugs in comparison to morphine and heroin. I, before doing this, putting the presentation together, I saw, I knew a lot about fentanyl. But I was very surprised at the amount of potency that carfentil has. It's ten thousand times stronger than morphine, which is really, really insane. So that's something to continue to keep in mind. And here's another visual. To give you an idea of how much of each drug it takes to trigger an overdose. And in comparison to heroin, fentanyl and carfentil require very small amounts to trigger an overdose. And it doesn't necessarily have to be injected into the skin. It can just be absorbed into the skin, actually. Here's another, here's a graph just showing the number of drug overdose deaths involving fentanyl by quarter. And this is only from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen. You can see that increase starting to happen around two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. There are, wasn't a chart necessarily showing what that number is affected, how that number was affected because of COVID. But I would imagine that that number would jump significantly because of COVID, COVID. We're seeing, there's been limited trade and travel. And because of that, we're hearing about a lot of people having to substitute or cut their drugs. To, to meet demands that, for drug supply. There are a lot of, a lot more overdoses happening because of fentanyl alone and not just because of substance use. Substance use in general is going up, but fentanyl and that being included in drugs is going up a lot more significantly. Because of access to pure supply of drugs. Other risk factors associated with drug use are return to use after long-term recovery. Being recently released from jail or prison, first time use and using alone. Mainly, these are the, the main two I want to focus on, a return to use after long-term recovery and using alone. Especially now, right now during COVID, one of the main health concerns that has been talked about a lot. Is soc- social isolation because of social distancing and stay-at-home orders that are being put in place. We have older populations that may be taking their med, prescribed medications by themselves. And there's no one there to assist or help them if they might take too much by accident or take too many. They are also at risk in this case. We also have people that are under high-stress situations right now. Because of loss of employment, and that will put them in other, in, in a tough spot. And we know that substance use is a very common coping mechanism for many people. And with that, not only, not only that, for as far as people that are returning to long-term use. They, their tolerance levels are lowered. They may be familiar with a certain dosage. And going back to that dosage with the expectation that they're getting the same drug, which is not the case, as we know. Because fentanyl is being introduced more on the market now. That's pretty much, I'm gonna let Ashley finish the rest of the presentation off. Ashley?
Thanks, Natalie. So I want to just talk a little bit about what Port is doing to address the opiate crisis here in Rowan County. And how we are continuing to amp up our efforts as we've seen the increase since COVID nineteen. And since isolation has become a huge factor in our participants' lives. We see here, I just put a little bit on, from January to June of our success rate. Our successful contact is in blue, our received services is in red. And the green are people who did not want port services at this time. As you can see, our success rate for actually getting in contact with people is pretty high. I feel like that is a huge testament to us, considering that most of our participants are homeless. They don't have phones often, they don't have permanent addresses. So we've been able to get in touch with these people, and we're really grateful for that. And from the people that we've been able to get in touch with, we've also had a high success rate of people who've received services. Our highest rate is about forty-three percent who receive services. And that's of the total number of people who overdosed in that month. And then our lowest was about twenty-six percent. Again, I just think that's outstanding, considering the people that we're ser- we're serving. And the rate of being able to get in touch with them. We do have people who deny help, but I will say that the people who have denied help, they always state how thankful they are. That we are reaching out to them, that. they always state how thankful they are that we are reaching out to them, that they don't feel alone and that they do have a service that they can call on when they're ready. And we have had people who denied help originally or initially, but came back to us later and asked for our services. We had a gentleman that was our first participant and he did not end up getting treatment until over a year later. But he did end up in detox in in a halfway house and we're grateful. So we're grateful that we're still here for them to utilize that service. Since we have been, since COVID, we, you know, we've been giving out Narcan more than we were originally. Of course, we were given out, we've been giving out Narcan this whole time, but because of the increase in overdose, we saw a huge need to get out there, to really get out there and to reach the people that we serve, the people who are in active use. And you know, I myself, being somebody who who lived with substance use disorder, I know the importance of being able to just let somebody know that they're cared for and that we can help them. The mobile Narcan has also increased access to people's, for people to have care. So even though we're distributing Narcan, it creates space for us to communicate with that individual about their options and how they can utilize those options via port. We've definitely had successes with that. We've had individuals, actually, we've had individuals that have come up. I know two homeless participants that we were able to reach with our mobile Narcan just distribution came up to me one day at a goodwill and let me know that our Narcan had saved that person's life the day before. They were living in a tent back in the woods. They did not have a cell phone to call nine one one. And our Narcan was their lifeline. There was all, there were some other people around them, but refused, they refused to call nine one one because they were scared of getting in trouble. So had it not been for the Narcan that we distributed, that person would not be here today. And actually, while we were in this meeting, I just got a message from another participant that said, your Narcan just saved my boyfriend's life. And I constantly hear about the stories of people that their lives were saved. We also get to hear about success stories for people that have been able to get into long term treatment programs. I can think of so many stories I'd love to share and so many women and men that are still in long term treatment programs that have months and months behind them, clean and sober, are living good lives. One in particular is a twenty one year old gentleman who he came to us, he had an open case with Child Protective Services, him and his wife were both in active use. And we were able to get them into, him into a program. And from getting him into a program, he was able to get his wife into that program. And they were able to have their case closed with with Child Protective Services. They're in counseling and they are doing so well. We do, I do keep in touch with them from time to time just to check in on them. And not only were we able to help him, we were able to help his wife, but he also asked me to help his mother. So from our port services, we're able to connect not just with the individual, but people's families and and help, you know, help so many more people than just that one person. Another story really quick, we had a lady that we were able to help get into a long term treatment program, but while she was waiting, she was incarcerated. And from, she actually referred us to, I think about ten more people who wouldn't have known we were here had it not been for us connecting with her. So and some of those people that I was able to connect with then go on to long term treatment programs and again, have many months clean behind them. So we are really grateful just to be out here in the community, helping those. And you know, as the increase in overdose overdoses rise, you know, the importance of a service like this, you know, people are isolated, people have barriers to care. And you know, again, from somebody who who has struggled with substance use disorder, that barrier to care is something serious. I did not know the services that were available to me and it took somebody coming to me. And that's what we're doing here. We're going to them, we're letting them know that they do have services that they can utilize, whereas many of them do not think they do based on their economic status, based on their lack of healthcare. So I know that we're making a difference in this community. And I'm grateful for the lives that we've been able to reach and touch. And I'm also grateful for this program for myself because this program gave me an opportunity to have a career that I otherwise would not have been able to have and is able, has been able to continue my recovery to serve others and to serve my community. So I really appreciate y'all for letting us share this with you. And I appreciate all the commissioners and the people in this room that have helped me continue my recovery. And I just, I get, just thank you. I guess that's it.
Ashley, would you talk just a little bit about the support groups that you run?
So we do have support groups and we have educational pieces. We were having a little bit of struggles getting people to come out to Daymark. And so we had actually moved our services to Rowan Helping Ministries where we were able to take that resource to the people who needed to utilize it. We had a great amount of success with attendance while we were at Rowan Helping Ministries with our educational pieces and with our support groups. And we talk about anything from harm reduction to just life to what can we do on a day to day basis to remain in recovery, to relationships, to the effects that drugs have on our brain, what what's going on in our brains or, you know. And so they've been successful and we moved them to a virtual setting as of COVID. And I was, we're hoping that because a barrier of transportation seems to be an issue, that that will help people be able to attend our support groups.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions that we can answer? If not, any of the graphs or information can be found on these links. If you're interested in getting the presentation, I can send that to you. That's pretty much it. Thank you so much.
Thanks Natalie.
Thank you Natalie and Ashley. I know this is an ongoing, Judy, did you have something?
No, go ahead and then I'll add.
No, go ahead.
Well, one, one other, there's two reasons I really wanted them to come tonight. And number one is the incredible, I think incredible results that they're having. As Ashley said, you know, she's a recovering addict and as she says, it takes an addict to talk to an addict. And so she's been incredibly successful and Natalie is, and Jeff, I mean, it's just an incredible team. The grant does run out the end of the year and the health department is working hard to find resources. But at some point, my hope is that we can make Ashley's position permanent at the health department. So can I just kind of put that in back of your mind? That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, again, thank you all for your time and joining us. Do you have a motion to adjourn? I thought I'd try. All right, let's move on. Aaron, engineering contract? Or Northeast Water System?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have here to not with us two representatives from Hazen. And Randy, do you have their their slide? Before, thank you, but before, before we go to the slide, I just want to go over the task orders. Because I've reviewed the slide and as you look at the slide, when you, when you, well, I'll just ask Aaron, Aaron, I know it's not in your presentation, but when you get to task order one, if you can provide the board the dollar amount, which is a hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred. Task order number two, forty seven thousand five hundred. And task order number three, forty five thousand dollars with a total cost of services, two hundred and twenty five thousand. And another thing I would like to point out to the board, if the board approves the budget amendments as presented, there is a budget amendment on the agenda that the board will be considering tonight, and it's the last budget, budget amendment in the attachment. So it will fund and 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 pay for this. And it's moving funds from the Water Infrastructure Capital Projects Fund into the Enterprise Fund. So that would, that would cover the cost of the fees. Now, if we end up, and I think the board, everyone's fairly familiar with the, with the issue and the project, if we end up being required to build a chemical booster station, there may not be enough money to do that. So with that said, Aaron, if you would like to get started and commissioners, I'm, I'll be available to answer any questions after their brief presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you, Mr. Church. I can appreciate the chairman's comments and I'll try to make this as brief as possible, but what's that?
I did say brief.
That's right, that's right. Well, we will definitely do that. My name is Aaron Babson. I work with Hazen and Sawyer. We're an engineering consulting firm. I am the operations manager in our Greensboro office. So I do appreciate the invite to this meeting and certainly appreciate you considering us for for this project. We are just a little bit about Hazen. We started in nineteen fifty one, so have been around nearly seventy years. We are water wastewater, that's all we do. So you're not going to get.
Oh, Aaron, excuse me for for one moment, I can't see your presentation. Hold on, here we go. There we go. Thanks.
There we go. Okay. So Roger's sharing the screen. So yeah, so around eleven hundred employees. We have four offices in the state of North Carolina, so we definitely have great coverage around here. We enjoy working with utilities and that is our our primary focus to work with municipalities and and state organizations. So this is exactly what we do with water and especially with water distribution systems. Roger Arnold is a subject matter expert with Hazen and Sawyer on lead and copper. And that is contaminations and that, and that is what this project is about. And of course, you're familiar with that. And so Roger will go through the different task orders. Again, that's three task orders before you tonight. One for the design of the chemical booster pump station. The second for sampling programs with Virginia Tech. And then a third to do some distribution modeling and some assessment. So we we prepared just a short seven or eight slide presentation here. I'm going to turn this over to Roger and then we're available for questions afterwards. But again, just thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks again for having us this evening and for the opportunity to speak about this project. Here's a quick overview of what we'll cover today. We really wanted to provide a little bit of background on the recent history leading to this project. Why is this project being performed and why is this important for the water system? We'll talk about some actions that have previously been completed this year towards some progress on this issue. And then we'll, we'll talk about a brief overview of the proposed task orders, next steps through this proceed. And we'd be happy to take any questions at the end of the presentation. The Northeast County, Rowan County Water System contains about a hundred and fifty five metered connections, so a hundred and fifty five customer homes connected to the system, serving a population of around four hundred and fifty people. This system was previously supplied by private groundwater wells, which were affected by industrial contamination. And there were concerns about the quality of water supplied in this area. So as a result, water quality changed from private groundwater wells to a public water supply coming from the city of Salisbury. And in two thousand eighteen, the the infrastructure was constructed to supply this, this water from the city of Salisbury into the Rowan County system. In contrast to the groundwater source previously used by by private owners in this area, this is a surface water source treated at the city's water treatment plant and pumped to the Rowan County system. So here's a little bit of background on this project and why this is being conducted. The lead and copper rule is a national regulation that that regulates lead levels in drinking water. And when the Northeast Rowan County Water System began receiving public water supply, it became subject to a large set of largely new regulations for this area that were of course not not required when water customers were using private groundwater wells. And one of those is the lead and copper rule. In several customers' homes, since the monitoring began, there have been lead levels above what's known as the action level in the lead and copper rule. And generally, the source of lead in this case is privately owned plumbing materials. It's important to keep in mind, this is not any, you know, lead coming from the city of Salisbury Water Supply or even the county's distribution system. This is lead that is released into the water from plumbing materials in customers' own homes. However, the lead and copper rule does require something called optimal corrosion control treatment. This is conditioning of the water to minimize the possibility of lead release to industry accepted standards. So in response to some of the elevated lead levels in in certain homes, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality designated that a chemical booster station must be implemented. There are some other strategies under consideration. And so the final decision to construct depends on both ongoing sampling and the outcome of the proposed study tasks that we'll talk about tonight. So a series of actions have already been completed towards notifying customers about this risk as well as mitigating its effects. So public education materials have been distributed, a letter was sent to all customers in the Northeast County, Rowan County Water System, notifying them of of the elevated lead levels in some homes and presenting ways that they can reduce lead exposure in their water from their private plumbing materials. The county also developed a voluntary lead and copper sampling program where any customer in the area who would would like to have a lead test can have one done at no charge to them. And in that case, if if lead levels are above the action level in the lead and copper rule, then the county is providing a certified point of use filter for lead removal at no cost. So there are certain types of filters, as simple as this pitcher filter you see here, which can be effective for removing lead from water. And those have been distributed to to several customers, which did have elevated lead levels. Also, distribution system water quality monitoring is is being performed, more more monitoring than ever before to understand water quality. And this is important from a regulatory perspective and working with the EQ. And lastly, virtual community meetings were were held, at least offered to the customers to address any concerns about their water quality. As Mr. Church mentioned, there are three task orders in our proposed scope of work. Task order number one is design bidding and construction administration, split into three subtasks of a chemical booster pump station, which which may need to be implemented. Task order number two is corrosion control testing with support from Virginia Tech. We've engaged Virginia Tech based on our prior experience that they're among the the leading experts on this particular issue nationally and have a lot of experience in doing the type of testing that needs to be done for this project. So they'll be helping out with with laboratory work for task order number two. And for task order three, this includes some additional compliance supports, work and water quality analysis work. Again, helping to understand what is the the right solution to this issue and provide some scope to continue to coordinate with with the EQ. and provide some scope to continue to coordinate with with the EQ to reach resolution on this issue. I believe Mr. Church had asked us to mention the the task order amounts for each of these on the slide. Task order one was a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. That's split among three different subtasks. It's also important to keep in mind that if at any point on on this task order, it's determined based on discussions with the EQ that construction of a chemical booster pump station is no longer required. Then then work on this task order can stop at at whatever point that decision is made, so that the county would not incur any additional costs. Task order number two, the total on that is forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, with a portion of that being allocated to Virginia Tech. And then task order number three for additional water quality analysis and compliance support services is forty-five thousand dollars.
Roger, if you could go go back. A question my, you know, one could ask, well, why would we design, bid and construct a chemical booster pump station and at the same time do corrosion control testing on the line? And it's. I guess task order one, number one, the the state is not optional. They're saying that it needs to be built by next year. But correct me if my, if I'm wrong, there's a, there's a possibility that this corrosion control testing with Virginia Tech could provide empirical data that could persuade the state not to require the construction of a chemical booster pump station. Is that correct?
That that is correct. We feel that the state has somewhat limited justification to require this. And by performing the corrosion control testing, that that may provide justification that construction of that chemical booster pump station is is not required or not even an appropriate strategy. But the testing would need to be done in order to make that assertion to DEQ.
And and is it also possible that task order two could confirm that the state's requirement is what needs to be done?
That that's correct. It's it's possible that that testing would would have that outcome. Hopefully with some some refinements beyond what what the state has provided. But yes, if if the results of the study indicate that that is a reasonable approach, that would provide added justification to the county's plan to to construct a chemical booster pump station and more justification to make that capital expense.
Thank you, Roger.
And also wanted to to point out that the lead and copper rule in general provides a very limited timeframe for responding to this type of situation. That puts any utility in a very difficult position in terms of of timing to do the studies and potentially the the design and construction work that needs to be done. It's it's always a tight turnaround on any utility in this situation. So here are a few key next steps to to evaluate corrosion control that are planned in in task orders two and three. So in addition to the the design and construction services, water quality analysis is very important. Working in collaboration with the county as well as the city of Salisbury to determine how their water treatment and distribution systems influence water quality within the Northeast Rowan County system. We've also planned support for investigative tap sampling at additional homes. Wanted to point out that only about twenty homes have have been tested within this system. So by by doing additional tests in a in a scientific way, we can get additional data to to support the corrosion study that's being performed. Our scope includes support for sample site assessments to understand the sources of of lead release in customers' homes. And this is also really important for determining the best treatments to target those materials that are present. And lastly, corrosion control testing, this would be be something done at the laboratory using representative materials and and water samples from each system to determine the most appropriate treatments to to minimize lead release. And with that, we'd be happy to to take any other questions that you may have.
So, Aaron. Question one is, we don't have a choice, right? And then question two is, we're asking us to approve task order one, two, three, and the agreement with with this group for general services?
Yeah, I I I would say you don't have a choice on task order one. And task order three, I think you do have a choice on task order two. But that's the task order that may prove, oh, it may help us prove that there is a better solution or that the required solution is not going to work.
Two?
Ta- task order two. It, task order two is the one that, you know, thirty-five thousand of that task order is going to Virginia Tech. And twelve thousand five hundred is going to corrosion control testing. You have a choice on this one because you could just, the board could decide we're going to do exactly what the state says and we're not going to study it. And we're not going to question it. We're just going to go ahead and design, build, construct the booster pump station, which is what we're we're going to do anyway. It's just that task order two may present data that that would would help the county. Can you help me with the words, Roger? What what, I mean, it could help the county persuade the state that this is not the appropriate measure?
That's right. And, you know, not not shown here are costs for construction itself of the the chemical station, so that that's, you know, the most significant cost overall. So so doing the the study proposed in task order two may may help the county to eliminate that that significant construction cost.
Roger, do you have an estimate for task order two? As far as cost?
For for task order two, you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so the the cost of that task order is forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, including the the portion allocated for for Virginia Tech.
Thanks. Aaron, do we have to decide this tonight?
No.
Oh.
You you do not have to to decide this tonight, but, well, I would say, I would say probably it's in the county's best interest to move forward on task order one and three as soon as possible. Because we, the the state is requiring us to have a booster pump station by next, what is it, June?
And we're talking, talking how many million?
No, this is, this is, this is, now, the boost, the the cost of the booster pump station is is yet to be determined. This, the the hundred and thirty-two thousand is for the design bidding and construction administration.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I my point is, is that if we can spend forty-seven thousand dollars more and perhaps put this baby to bed and not have to go through all of this other rigmarole, that we could save ourselves a lot of money.
Yes, I I'd agree. That is, I mean, that is a true statement. And not only could you save that, I mean, you would save the construction on that, but you would also save the bidding and construction administration costs in task one, right? So there'd be a a bit of additional savings in that as well. And if we find the answer out soon enough, right, I mean, we can just even stop design at at the standpoint it is. It it is set up to be a not-to-exceed contract, so as soon as you said, stop, you know, we're pencils down. And whatever has been spent today has been spent. It's a, it's not, it's not a lump-sum arrangement.
So if we go go ahead and approve all three task orders. Well, that that would be Aaron, Aaron Church, is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir. That that's my recommendation.
Okay. All right, any other, any other questions for our panelists and for Aaron? All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the three task orders and general services agreement? I I heard him. I heard Judy. Did I hear another?
Yes, you can't recognize me. The whole day you can't recognize me.
Look like an anonymous snitch, because all we see always sees a silhouette of you. You're washed out.
You don't have to see me, you just have to hear me.
But we want to see you, Jim. You're you're a handsome fellow.
I've already, I've already seconded the motion. You don't have to sell anymore.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, Roger and Aaron, thank you for being with us.
Thank you both very much.
Y'all.
For the opportunity.
Very much for the opportunity.
All right. Next is litter report, just to give the general public a a report on our roadside activities. Rowan County staff removed seventeen thousand one hundred and forty pounds of roadside debris and litter during the two-week period, beginning Monday, August third through Friday, August fourteenth. That's the last data we've got. So seventeen, over seventeen thousand pounds. Thirty-six tires were collected. And basically, there were three dumping where folks had just dumped. These have been assigned to the county environmental crimes enforcement officer for investigation. And so hopefully, we'll find out who is misplacing their garbage. And so that's our report for that. So be responsible for your garbage Rowan. Thank you for that information from Caleb Sinclair. Finance Department Budget Amendments, those that we just voted on will also be in here. So do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments as provided? Jim and and Mike, motion in a second, all in favor. All right, we have board appointment. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. Dr. Carol Ann Cody has reapplied, but she's fulfilled her limitations established by the board. But we've not had anyone else volunteer for for this committee. So I'd make a motion that we consider waiving the term limits and reappoint Dr. Cody. Let's just say we, I make a motion, we waive the term limits. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to appoint Carol and Cody to the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee?
So moved.
In a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Let's see, on Cleveland Community Volunteer Fire Department and East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department, we have Patrick Viper and Sue Choate have applied to those Fire Department Commissioners respectively. Do we have most of those two? All right, Jim, Mike and Jim, motion in a second, and all in favor, say aye. All right, then, on the Health Department, we've received, I think, five applications. Judy?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, I would like to nominate Derry Caldwell for the position of veterinarian.
Okay, India. Who else do you have?
Oh, and then Carla Rose for optometrist. And Dr. Amy Wilson for physician.
Okay, and so they understand Derry is not a veterinarian and Carla is not optician. We have either a veterinarian or optician submit an application, then those would take precedence over Derry and Carla. So, go ahead.
So what, yeah, someone explain that, because what I saw was that if we have one apply, they have to resign.
Right.
So we don't have any, so some, I mean, what what ability do we have not to point whoever applies now?
Well, I've been looking for a veterinarian for three years. And if I can finally find one, then then Derry will have to step down and the veterinarian will go in that slot.
Well, no, what I'm saying is then we're not appointing the person, and the person just applies and they automatically get on the board.
I think they'd have to be appointed by us, just.
Right.
Then well, that's what I'm saying is, is that doesn't make any sense to me. Why, why? If they automatically have to resign if someone applies?
Right, when we appoint, okay, so say a veterinarian finally applies and now it come to us to nominate and approve. And then at that point, then Derry would have to step down and the veterinarian would be seated on the health board.
Yeah, how how long have these spots been open?
Well, veterinarians have been open over three years. And I believe the optometrist has been for over two years. And the physician is at least a year and a half.
And so I assume I mean, other than, you know, Greg saying, you know, we've got sixty-three openings on the board or what kind, I mean, what does the county do? Do they might know what the county normally does to try to recruit these type positions? I mean, do we put ads in a paper and say, hey, we need a, we know, we need a doctor, we need a veterinarian, we need a physician, we need an optometrist? Or if we just just been sitting out there, no one's applied, because, I mean, I understand, it's hard to get people on boards, because they don't really make anything. And they have busy lives. But, you know.
I think part of it is, Mike, is that people just don't know about it. And the only time it gets announced is during our meetings when Greg does it.
All right, you know, ma- maybe we we could have April work with Carolyn. Carolyn tracks the board stuff. Maybe April could work with Carolyn to try to work on a you know, county Facebook campaign and advertise this. Also, I think another thing we could do is, you know, we've got the Chamber of Commerce, which the county supports.
Right.
But they have a good program, which most of us know about, is Leadership Rowan.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that folks who's, you know, in companies invest and their employees to go through Leadership Rowan, well, then they they need to get involved in leadership. And that's how a lot of us got involved was joining boards once we went through Leadership Rowan. So I think we could certainly work with the chamber and say, hey, here's a, you know, I think the chamber could you know, I think the chamber could reach out to Leadership Rowan graduates and say, hey, let's, the county's invested in you. Let's start investing in the county. And, and I think that would be a good marriage. And I, I know that that, I know the chamber would be very happy to do that, I'm sure. So I think those are two avenues that we could do tomorrow.
I think that's a great idea.
So I will point out, I know we added what, four or five member applications, which normally we don't because I think that the deadline was, I think, the 28th of August. So we finally, for some reason, I guess, for three years, no one wants to be on the board and all of a sudden we've been getting six, I guess, applications. I know one of them or five, I guess, one of them didn't live in the county. So I find that very interesting that all of a sudden everybody's interested in it. Is there any way we can expand this board if we've got people that actually want to serve on it at this point? I mean, if we've got empty spots for years and no one has any interest. Because I think if we have three openings, five people applied, we've got one ineligible because they don't live in the county. If we just added two more citizens, then we'd have 13, 13 members. Might be a question for Carolyn.
Mr. Chairman, the statute specifies the makeup of that board. I'm not looking at the statute at this moment, but it spells out X number of members from the general public, optometrist, veterinarian, physician, and on down the line.
Yeah. So I know that Judy has worked to try to get folks on this. I mean, it is the Board of Health. And so when you look, we do have some good applicants all the way around. You know, Derry Caldwell is the former CEO of Novant Rowan. You know, and I certainly would support having her on there. I don't know Dr. Wilson, but having a doctor on the Board of Health, I, I think is a good thing. Carla Rose has been really the, the point of contact for the realtors and, and developers and builders. They've shown just a lot of interest because of the environmental health struggles that there's been. And I've gotten a lot of calls from her regarding what could they do, you know, to help. So I, I, I realize we don't have someone, we, we don't have a position on the board or a, a Realtor or developer or builder. But in the meantime, I think having her on there as a, as a contact is something that I would support. So, and there's other folks that have applied that, you know, I know, and I, I think would do a fine job. These are just certainly three that I would support. So we can, we can vote, we can vote one at a time if we want. We can vote as a slate, whatever you'd like. But the, the answer to your question, Mike, why all of a sudden, I, I know Judy's been working to get folks on the board. So we have good representation because we're here tonight talking about the Health Department quite a bit.
Yeah. And part of, part of the thing is, and I don't know if I just missed it or what, but not understanding that you could appoint general citizens to these positions if they've been open long enough. Aaron, was that Joe Moore that brought that up?
Yes, ma'am. That, that's how I learned about that, that interpretation of, of that.
Yeah. So, you know, learning that is relatively recent. Derry was actually going to apply back in January. But then, then we didn't have an open position for her then. She'd have to, she would have to come to the board as a, a citizen. So anyway, that's how, that's how it all fell together.
All right. Other questions? All right. So we have a motion for Derry Caldwell as veterinarian. Carla Rose is up, opti- is it optometrist?
Yes.
And Dr. Wilson is physician. Do we have a second? All right, Jim, in any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Local Emergency Planning Committee. Captain Aaron Lewis Roberts applied to fill a vacancy. And let's see, do we have a motion in a second to, to appoint Captain Aaron Lewis Roberts to the Local Emergency Planning Committee?
Boo.
All right, Jim, motion second. Judy, yeah, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Dolores Elliott applied for reappointment, but she's full, she's fulfilled her term limitations. Due to difficulty in finding volunteers for this committee, we're asked to consider waiving that. Do we have a motion to waive that rule?
So moved.
In a second.
Aye.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Dolores Elliott for Nursing Home Advisory Committee.
Boo.
All right, Jim, in a second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan County Zoning Board of Adjustment Kathy Griffin applied for reappointment for a three-year term. Let's see, and Tourism Don Bringle applied for reappointment. And so he's going to serve as the county, one of the county lodging members. So motion in a second for those two.
So moved.
All right. In a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Vivian Hopkins filed to fill the vacant seat for a county attraction seat. That'll be for two years. So motion in a second to approve Vivian Hopkins for tourism.
So moved.
All right. In a second. All right, Mike, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And as, as we talked about, we do have 63 openings. I'll, I'll talk to the chamber tomorrow and, and see if there's something that we can do with them. And Aaron, you're on, would you, would you mention to, to April, maybe get together with Carolyn and maybe work out some type of something that we can put maybe on our homepage on rowancounty.gov or dot com, I'm sorry, but also something for our Rowan County Facebook page that we can start blasting that out to try to get some, some folks.
Yeah, I think we could probably get Josh Berger on to do an article in the paper about it too.
Yeah. All right. So man, do we really? We've got a closed session, don't we?
It, it, it can be postponed, Mr. Chairman.
This is an economic development matter is I saw that Scott Shelton was on here earlier. It looks like he's still on here. Scott, is this something?
Yeah, hi- his, his item can't be postponed, Scotts. I'm sorry. I was speaking for my, myself on the small issue that I was going to bring up.
Okay. Well, then I move that the board now enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A4 to discuss an economic development matter.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so then closed session information was sent to us. So we have a conference call. So don't log out of your Zoom. Randy will take us down. He'll stop the video and mute all of us. And, and then just call into this conference call 919 number. Okay. We'll see you there in a minute. All right, we're back. So there was no actionable items coming out of closed session. So do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, Jim, motion. Judy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Y'all be safe.
You too. Bye.